To the city council meeting for January 8th. Happy New Years, everybody at home. Can I have a roll call, please?
All council members are present.
Thank you. And can I have former Mayor Quigg lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Quigg. So the first item, Mayor Quigg, is BOSWA presentation.
Got to move the tile.
So, BOSWA is the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. And can you give us a little history about that, too, for our audience, please?
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Lee, council members, city mayor and staff, I represent the city of Millbrae as a director for the BOSWA board. We love to use acronyms, as the mayor said. BOSWA stands for the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. Millbrae is one of the agencies that is represented. There are 26 agencies that purchase water from San Francisco. The member agencies purchase 75 percent of all the water from San Francisco. I'm here this evening to update you on three important issues facing our water system provided by the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. The three issues are water supply and water use, the California Supreme Court denial of the Restore Hetch-Echey Appeal, and State Water Research Board, the Delta Plan. The good news as of today, the BOSWA agencies are using 14 percent less water than pre-drought in September of 2013. In the fall of 2018, the water storage at the San Francisco Regional System in San Francisco was in excess of 80 percent, which is greater at this time than it was last year. And it has since rained in November and December and January, so today the number is even greater. It's probably at 100 percent. The Calaveras Dam, which is part of the water system project, is almost complete, and this flow of water is now flowing into the dam. When this dam is completed, it will provide 40 percent of all the storage for the San Francisco Water System and the BOSWA agencies. BOSWA continues to look for long-term supplies of water and has initiated discussions with the Amador Water Agency on a pilot program to transfer water in 2020 into the San Francisco Water System to meet the needs of BOSWA agencies in the event of another drought. BOSWA is also working with other water agencies to provide water during dry drought years. Restore Hetch-Echey, a group whose goal is to restore Hetch-Echey Valley, this would result in draining the reservoir. This drastic measure would result in the loss of water to 1.8 million residents and 40,000 businesses. In April of 2015, Restore Hetch-Echey filed a lawsuit in Tuolumne County, naming the San Francisco and the BOSWA and the Modesto and Turlock Irrigation Districts. In April of 2016, the court ruled that the claim was preempted by the Federal Raker Act. In June of 2018, the California appellate court also confirmed that 2016 decision. Currently, Restore Hetch-Echey intends to take this to the U.S. Supreme Court. The city of San Francisco and the BOSWA will continue to monitor this situation. The last time I gave a report to you, I talked to you about the Day Delta Plan that the State Water Research Board proposed. On July 6th of 2018, the State Water Resources Board issued its final proposal on the Bay Delta Plan. This plan requires the release of more water for fish from February to June each year. It requires a 40 percent unimpaired flow of water into the San Joaquin Tributary, including the Tuolumne River, which is water to supply San Francisco and BOSWA. This would reduce the amount of water available to 1.8 million residents and 40,000 businesses. The economic analysis shows that these shortages would result in an annual impact of 140,000 to 188,000 jobs lost in the Bay Area and result in $37 to $49 billion in decreased sales transactions. The BOSWA Board supports the state to provide water for humans, fish, and other wildlife, but does not support the plan as it is currently being proposed. There's a better plan being proposed by the Modesto and Turlock Irrigation District, which BOSWA supports. BOSWA also supports a voluntary negotiated settlement on this issue. BOSWA, a strategic responsibility, is rooted in California's state law, AB 2058. This bill was authored by former state Assembly Member Lou Pappan, the father of Gina, to protect the interests of the water users in Alameda, San Mateo, and Santa Clara Counties. This concludes my report. I will continue to keep the council and staff updated on important water issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Quigg. Any questions?
Councilwoman Snyder. I'm not sure which title of yours to use, Commissioner, as our Park and Rec Commissioner, so that's what I'm going to use, unless it's Director with this hat. Because of the cost of water, because of Millbrae now working on not just water infrastructure, but sewer and stormwater infrastructure, our residents are letting their yards go. We still don't have a program here in Millbrae that allows us to swap out grass for drought-tolerant programs, and I know that that's a BOSWA program. What is it going to take for us to get into alignment and start reducing the use of our water without having our front yards, citywide, look decrepit?
Well, as you know, the city has developed a drought program here in front of the city to show city residents what they can do instead of having lawns. BOSWA also supports that there is water-tolerant systems available, and BOSWA also has information available to residents if they want to contact BOSWA to get that information. So I think that we are all trying to work together to keep our landscaping looking nice without having to use an excessive amount of water. And as I said in my opening comments, we're using less water now than we did during the drought years. So we're working in the right direction, that's for sure.
Can you tell us where Millbrae sits with the other cities in terms of the lawn forgiveness program, whatever that program is called? Where you get, if you replace your lawn, and it's still proven to be lawn, and you replace it with drought tolerant, you get a rebate? And we're not part of that program, but many other cities are. So how many cities are not?
You know, I don't know how many cities are not. I'd have to find that out and get back to you. But, you know, certainly, if you want to participate in the program with the BOSWA program, you certainly can.
The city can't. My understanding is our residents do not qualify, because there has to be a city match or a city participation.
I'm not sure of that. If the city...
I'd like us, we've talked about this in my three years on council, during the high part of the drought, during the year that the drought was declared semi-over, and we're still talking about it. So I'd like to get an answer for that. Okay, second question, changing subjects entirely. The data that you quoted said that if they have to give more water to fish, which of course fisheries provide food and provide jobs to fisheries, but we're going to lose jobs, could those jobs be replaced with recycled water? And where does BOSWA sit in terms of working with utilities to increase the capacity of recycled water use? Because I really honestly don't like to say, oh, we're going to lose all these jobs, if I don't know that they couldn't be substituted by using non-potable water.
Well, if the Restore Hetch-Echey is successful in closing down the dam and opening up the valley, it will certainly lose jobs and it will certainly lose supply of water. There is no, you know, the Restore Hetch-Echey program, people have not come up with an alternative source of water. So if they take the water away, it will certainly affect it. Now, as far as the Bay Delta Plan, working with the Modesto Irrigation District and Tuolumne, they've come up with some plans that are workable that does not entail the amount of water released that the State Water Board is talking about happening. And what they're trying to do is to work on some excavation where they can provide, you know, ponds and stuff for the fish to migrate, and a plan that might work out. So we're trying to work that out with the state at this point to see if that program is acceptable. That's why BOSWA is willing, at this point, to support the program that the Bay Area Delta Plan is talking about as far as preservation for fish and for wildlife and for human, but we also want to look at some alternative programs that are not as extreme as the programs presented by the State Water Board.
Okay. Just because you report to us, we don't actually report to you, or we don't say where we're interested in. I have an interest in protecting California's fisheries, whether they're steelhead salmon or steelhead or salmon or any of those. So when I hear jobs being compared to fish, and I come from an environmental background, that concerns me, because that's usually the rhetoric that's used to turn the population against taking care of non-voting critters. So I'm just throwing that out there, that I care that we maintain our fisheries.
I understand.
And I expect Millbrae to show that we care about maintaining fisheries.
I understand where you're coming from. And BOSWA also cares about the fish and wildlife and the human beings. The drastic measure would be reduced, it would be taking the dam down, which would reduce the amount of water and the amount it would cause, that's what would cause the reduction in jobs and the reduction in the economy.
I'm sorry, it's just because when you gave the report, you said that it was under the Bay Delta Plan, that they were still considering a loss of jobs. So maybe I was confused. If that's strictly from the removal of the O'Shaughnessy Dam, that's one thing. And I'm not saying I'm supporting the removing of the O'Shaughnessy Dam, but I am in support of adequate water, as well as that water helps flush out the South Bay. And having lived in Mountain View where we have red tides, you need that water to flush out the South Bay because it's a slow-moving water flow. So I just, I'm a little concerned that we don't ever get to talk to you in terms of what you're bringing to BOSWA, and yet your Millbrae's representative, and I'd love to see that improve.
Well, you know, it's not a problem. You can always talk to staff in the engineering department, and they can also present a report to BOSWA to be considered on their board, too. So it's not a matter of just me representing you. Your city engineer also represents you. The other point is, the O'Shaughnessy Dam is not the only storage of water. There are several storages of water up in the Hetch-Echey area. The O'Shaughnessy Dam is one storage. They also have Cherry Lake, which is another storage. They also have Eleanor Dam, which is another storage. And in addition to that, BOSWA also, the San Francisco Water Department, when the dam got raised at, what's the name of the reservoir up there?
San Andreas, up here? The San Andreas?
Crystal Springs.
Reservoir?
When the reservoir got raised at...
Crystal Springs.
No, not Crystal Springs. There's a dam up there.
Don Pedro?
Don Pedro?
Don Pedro Dam, yes. When Don Pedro raised the height of their dam, San Francisco Water Department paid for half of that cost. And the reason they paid for half of that cost was so they could use that as a waterbank. So what they do is they extend water. When water becomes excessive at O'Shaughnessy and at Cherry Lake and at Eleanor, they can send the water over to the reservoir over there, and they can draw that water off. Right now, that waterbank sits at 100 percent. During the drought, that reservoir got down to about 10 percent, but at least we had that reservoir available to continue to supply water to all the agencies. Again, 26 agencies, we being one of them, buy 75 percent of the water from San Francisco. The reason BOSWA came into existence was to make sure that we got treated fairly with San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and that's why it came into effect. And the creation of the Assembly Bill that Pappan passed is why the whole water system is being updated, because San Francisco neglected to update their water system until the Assembly Bill came into existence, and that's what created the update of the system. And now the whole system is being updated and being revised so that there's a guarantee that we will continue to have water. BOSWA is also concerned that San Francisco cannot only provide all the water during drought. That's why we're looking for alternatives to get water, Amador County being one of them, and we're also looking at other areas where we can obtain water during drought.
Okay. Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you, Mr. Quigg, for your representation of us on BOSWA and for explaining the challenges that BOSWA is dealing with. So the cases you've mentioned, I view as challenges to our water supply and what BOSWA is doing to preserve that. We are concerned with, of course, increased population and increased demand on our water. So when you mention them deterring water to the Central Valley, of course, we, the service or the agency purchasers, are deeply concerned about that. I think, as you know, Millbrae is working on our storage of water.
Yes.
So if BOSWA can assist us in that manner, because we have to redo some of our storage units, I don't know if any grants or anything's available for something like that. I do know that our water rates keep going up because San Francisco is improving their system, as they're required to do by the law you mentioned. And our residents are frustrated because the city of Millbrae is 60, 70 years old, and our pipes need to be replaced. So that is kind of the double whammy. They raise the water rates, and we have to raise them just to keep up with the degrading infrastructure that we have here. So we appreciate all of your efforts in representing us at BOSWA and the efforts that they do. I know now that BOSWA, actually, the San Francisco Water People, SFPUC, is really relying on BOSWA for their input. So we thank you for your representation in that regard.
Well, as you mentioned, you know, the update of the water system, the 26 agencies are paying 75 percent of that cost. And, you know, one of the things that, the reason that BOSWA was created is that we audit the books every year in San Francisco to make sure that we are being treated fairly and being charged correctly. And it seems like every year when we audit the books, we came up with some discrepancies. And when the discrepancies came up, it involves usually a credit. And last year, I think the credit was a million dollars. And what that did was reduce the amount of water rates that San Francisco charged the agencies. And sometimes, I'll tell you how that happens. You know, we pay for water improvements that happen in the San Francisco system. We pay 75 percent because we're one of the 26 agencies. Well, what will happen sometimes when they do a project during the delivery system from Hetch-Echey, it might be a project that involves water and electricity. It might be a penstock where water flows down a penstock to generate power through turbines. Well, we come back and we audit the books and we say, no, you can't charge us for that because that's electricity and it's not water. So this is what BOSWA does to protect the interests of its member agencies, and that's why BOSWA was really created. One, to follow through that we are treated fairly, and two, to audit the books to make sure Trans Francisco charges us properly for our usage. So that's what we're all about. And the representation is very good. Every city and every agency that buys water has good representation. Our meetings are every other month. The public is invited to attend to meetings, and there are public meetings the same as we are here. So.
We appreciate the oversight has actually saved us a great deal of money.
Thank you so much. And I've done it for many years, and I'm really familiar with the program, and I'd like to continue doing it in the future if that happens. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, I have one other question, sir.
Dan.
I have one other question.
Oh, sir.
Is there any projects concerning recharging the aquifer with recycled water?
What SFPUC is working on right now is recharging some old wells. So they're storing water in some old wells, so it should give an additional water supply. I don't know about any use for aquifers right now, but I know they're recharging wells, and I think San Bruno's involved in that project because they do have some wells. So that's one of the newest things that's going on with making sure that there's adequate water supply during drought years. But, you know, BOSWA's also looking into our own alternate supplies with Amador County and some other cities where we can get water in the event San Francisco cannot provide the water that they've contracted to give us. Yes, Ann?
So I had heard that SFPUC was digging some wells in Millbrae, and San Bruno gets a percentage, probably a big percentage, of their water from wells, and I've never heard anything about saltwater intrusion. Does that cover, does BOSWA look at that, or is that a different entity that would look at that?
Well, you know, BOSWA doesn't look into the actual whether there's saltwater intrusion. What we have is a contract with San Francisco to provide clean and adequate water and to make sure the system is being provided properly. So I would imagine that we get reports from San Francisco, and we have not gotten involved in actually checking the quality of water.
So my question to staff would be, if San Bruno's been drawing down their aquifer, and we're right next door, and that can cause land subsidence, are we keeping an eye on that? And I'm just throwing that out there, something that we should be keeping an eye on, especially if San Francisco is drilling wells in their property here in Millbrae.
I should have maybe the engineer answer that question.
I don't know about any project going on in Millbrae, but I know that San Francisco has contracts with San Bruno to actually fill up some of their old wells that were not being used for years to store water. So that's a separate contract that San Francisco has with San Bruno.
Okay, so we have...
But can we just get confirmation? Are they digging wells in Millbrae or not? Something I've never heard of.
Your engineering department should know that.
There he is.
Good evening, may I ask, a member of the city council. San Bruno is not currently drilling any wells. They are recharging groundwater. There's a regional groundwater recharge program going on currently.
Clarification for the statement that Ms. Schneider made, that SFPUC is digging wells in our city.
There are a few test wells that's being drilled, but they are not for new wells. They are to recharge the groundwater. And yes, San Bruno does have blended well water and SFPUC water supply.
Okay. And could you also look into the swap for drought plant program that BOSWA's offering?
I believe Councilwoman Schneider has mentioned the lawn begone program, and that's something that we can definitely look into it. We have looked into it previously, but it is some affordability issue with this. So there'll be a rebate program that we provide to our resident if they choose to do artificial lawn.
Thank you. Any questions? No? All right, thanks. Okay, so our next presentation is, thank you, Mayor Quigg. Our next presentation is by trustee Dr. Mohammed Balum and Public Health Education Outreach Officer Megan Selby? Selby.
I like the dog. Bring it back.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and Vice Mayor Holber, and Councilwomen Olivia Schneider and Beban. I really appreciate the opportunity to present the San Mateo Mosquito and Vector Control District. We are, I've been a member of the district from March 2015. The district has been providing service to the city of Millbrae, and one of my duties there to oversee that service is being provided to the resident of the city of Millbrae. I attend the board, trustee board meeting once a month, and also I am a member of the financial committee, and where we look for every transaction, and also we are assessing the budget of the district. When I joined the district in 2015, they were just coming up from financial issues and long way that, actually, the district were, last year, were pressed by the San Mateo jury for their district transparency excellence certificate of excellence. They were awarded by that, and also by the district's designation award from the special district achievement. So it's really, the district is doing a great job into maintaining their financial and their service. I'm here presenting Ms. Megan Selby. She's our mosquito outreach program, and she will tell us what the district do for the city of Millbrae.
Thank you, and thanks again for making room for us on your busy agenda. I promise I'll be brief. So I wanted to just briefly say, since I haven't been in front of you in a while, about what we can do to help out your residents. We are the Mosquito and Vector Control District, but we do a lot of things that are not mosquitoes. We can do inspections for rodents. If a resident believes they're having an issue with rodents, we can tell them what sort of rodent is causing the problem, how it's getting in, and what they need to do to resolve the problem. We'll remove yellow jacket and wasp nests for free. Terminix will charge you about $175 for it, but you can have it done by the district. We'll identify any pest or insect that's causing a problem. We can do inspections and advice for wildlife. We can stock ornamental ponds and fountains with mosquito-eating fish. And we also have some disease surveillance, mosquito population surveillance, and other duties that we do on a preventative basis. And of course, we do presentations and resident education. So here in Millbrae, in 2018, we had about 75 service requests. Thirty-one of those were reports of mosquito problems or standing water. Fifteen were yellow jacket nest removals in areas that were threatening people or animals. We had 17 requests for rodent inspections at businesses or residences, and then a smattering of other requests, including insect IDs, wildlife, and such. And you can tell from that list, the bulk of our work here in Millbrae is actually preventative. We have a technician, her name is Kim, and she has been with the district for 15 years now, and she works, she's dedicated to this area. And in our database, we have about 1,800 known sources just in Millbrae that are checked and the water treated as needed on a rotating basis. 400 of those are residences that have a permanent water source, like a fountain, a livestock trough, or something that's going to hold water year-round and cause mosquito problems. We also have about 700 stormwater catch basins that are treated during the summer. That's because in the winter, they're being flushed out by rainwater. And then we have seasonal impounds, creeks, and other sources that need to be checked and treated for mosquitoes periodically on a preventative basis. If a resident does need help with any of our services, they can make a request online or by calling, and most of the time, we can have Kim out to their house within one or most two business days to help with whatever that problem is. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Megan. I just want to mention that last year I have bumblebee nests under my driveway and actually was threatening my kids because we walk there all the time, and I called the mosquito Kim, and they came to my house, and they came for three occasions and treated that bumblebee for free. So this is a service that is available for everybody, and we, the resident of the city of Millbrae, that can really use that, or even if they have a rodent problem, they can get advice and really could save a lot of money.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilwoman Snyder?
Thank you. I had read your report ahead of time. You mentioned that we've had an increase in rat sightings, but it's localized. Can you tell us what area that that is?
Sure. So the number of requests for rodent problems has been increasing year by year, peninsula-wide. It's kind of a different city every year that will have a little issue. We'll get a bunch of requests from somewhere in San Mateo or somewhere in San Carlos. I don't believe we've had a cluster of reports from Millbrae, but roof rats are a problem peninsula-wide, just because of our environment, and they're causing a lot of headache for residents.
And just for the public, at least when I lived in Santa Clara County, roof rats are the number-one cause of house fires. And I know my neighborhood, which is a block from here, has a rat problem, and my cats are doing their best job. They've brought me three presents, but I find a rat walking every night. And I have neighbors that are absentee neighbors with Ivy, which, last I had checked, is a good household or a good nesting spot. Are there things that we could be doing to reduce the chance of having rats?
Absolutely. On an individual level, residents can make sure that their house is sealed up so the rodents at least can't get inside, and then remove any rodent attractants from your own property, which would be any garbage that they could get to make that they could get to, making sure fruit is harvested or picked up promptly, vegetables as well. If you have a chicken coop, I'm not sure if your city allows chicken coops, but that's a common cause of residential rodent issues. And then on a community wide basis, clearing out vegetation and removing food sources as a neighborhood will reduce your, your rodent load.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Papin.
And to clarify, your contact information is on the city's website. So if anybody needs to contact you, we do encourage the public to do so. I know mosquitoes, everything can be a problem and we appreciate all the hard work and effort you guys put into the partnership that we have with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys also do gophers?
No.
We can send a technician out to make sure that you do indeed have gophers and not something else and we can provide advice. We just don't do any actual rodent control.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so at six o'clock, we had a study session for the BART development TOD-2, known as the gateway at Millbrae Station. So at this time, we'd like to resume that presentation. The Gateway staff gave a presentation and is there any other, you concluded that presentation. And so I'm guessing it's question time for the council?
Yes, we've concluded our presentation and just want to thank you very much for extending it. All our consultants are here and it's, it's great that you would take the time to do that. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So who would like to ask questions? Okay, Councilwoman Schneider.
I think mine are going to jump around a little bit because I had them on three different documents, but starting with the signage, the white color. Millbrae gets a lot of wind, which means we get a lot of dirt blowing around. And we also are by that airport. And the airports drop a kind of black soot that a lot of our residents complain about. So my concern, I look through everything and I go, you know, actually the white signs aren't that bad looking. And I'm very appreciative that planning darkened the colors of all the buildings. I like that. But I'm a little concerned that white, given our proximity to all those multiple forms of transportation, is going to look dirty fairly quick. I'm looking forward to hearing what my peers say, at least in turn of that, that white sign right there. I do like the aspect that you've included some wood, some more organic feel at the ground level. But what can, what can you tell me to make me think about white as a good idea?
Maintenance. And you're right. I mean, white is, and with all signs, and that's something that we talk about a lot, is, is it's like an automobile. They need to be maintained and cleaned. Your concerns aren't unfounded and that's, you know, one of the reasons we looked at alternative materials as well. We like the contrast, we like the white and there's times when white signs make good sense and, but it is a maintenance issue. And it would be, you know, to, to keep them clean and fresh, they would need to be washed and maintained.
Okay. I had read, and Mr. Arati, this might be for you, I'd read a housing leadership brochure over the break and they said that you've changed the name of the building. And since we're talking about signage, I don't know if we're talking about names of buildings. And in that report, they called it the Bay Shore Affordable Apartments. Is that the new name of the building?
No, we don't have a formal name for the affordable.
Good. I'm not overly fond of the word Bay Shore. As someone who grew up here, Bay Shore to me reminds me of a freeway. So just throwing that out there. Utility boxes, you've got them all as solid colors. This is more for your artistic team.
Before we move on from signage, can we?
If you want to do signage, sure, I can wait.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah, that works.
I'm exceptionally dis, oops, sorry. I'm exceptionally disappointed at the Millbrae aspect, the sign there. I mean, you've reduced us, that's the gateway to our city. The monument that exists now has been diminished to such an extent there. You compare it to the project sign, which is probably three times the size of the Millbrae sign here. This was a concern when we were looking at the project here is that that is, you know, people's introduction to Millbrae. And so that in and of itself, I think really needs to be something more significant. It just looks like it's been reduced to, yeah, here you are, here's Millbrae. And by the way, this is the Gateway Station. That's just not doing it for me here. We as a city, if people are going to drive by there, need to know that, you know, this is Millbrae and here, kind of like how the monument exists presently. So I would be looking for something much more significant as the entryway to Millbrae here.
Well, I mean, we can certainly, you know, study the options for that. And I, I have to say that from a visibility and legibility standpoint, I think this is going to be perceived and give much more identity than the existing sign.
You're not on the mic.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry. The existing sign actually is, is too big to really be perceived. The Millbrae is completely to the right, the seal is completely to the left, there's a disconnect. And visually, what you perceive in your sightline, it's, it's too much to take in. And we deal with scale issues all the time. It's not to say that this is the perfect size, but, you know, from a legibility and a visibility, as people are passing by, I really think this is going to be more legible. So we can certainly look at scale and size and placement.
Well, I think scale is exceptionally important at this point in time because you're putting big buildings, which is dwarfing that altogether. I mean, practically a street sign, when in fact that is supposed to signify you're in Millbrae. So I would request something more significant for the people who are just driving down Millbrae Avenue to say, okay, I'm in Millbrae now and here we go. And then as far as we have, and I know this is not part of that project, but there's a monument on the opposite side of the street. I don't know where the city plan is on that, but if you've got something like this on one side and you've got that other monument on the other, there needs to be some consistency. I'm not saying that the developer's responsible for that, but we as planners here and the planning commission, I don't know if they commented on that as far as the monument on the other side of the city, or Millbrae Avenue. So that to me is very important as we discuss these elements here. But what you have there to me is very miniscule and I don't think represents the city of Millbrae in the appropriate manner. So I would like to see something more significant and more sufficient to say, this is Millbrae.
Ms. Leva.
Councilmember Papin, I might have to respectfully disagree a little bit from what you said, but I, I like your point because that, that point of having a grand, huge sign on one side of the street as you're entering from the freeway and having this on the other side not matching, I think is, is not right. But yet, if you look at the sign in proportion to the retail behind it, I think that it's very valuable to the retail space behind it, not being, you know, obstructed by the sign of Millbrae. So I know that I had mentioned before, I know it, I don't even know if it's doable, but even an archway over Millbrae Avenue or at least halfway over, that was a welcoming to Millbrae is the effect that you'd like to see. But I'm not so sure that having a huge sign in front of that would be.
Well, and I'm not suggesting huge. You know, I see what you're saying about the retail, if I might, I'm sorry, but we're open for discussion here. I mean, it could actually be elongated in a way, but it just, it just kind of looks like a street sign to me right now. And I just don't think that's, when we talked about monument, it needs to be a monument in some way. I'm not saying that it has to be, you know, three stories tall here, but you're looking at the rest of the designs here and, I mean, look at the Millbrae Station sign, Ms. Leva.
I see it.
Okay, so, you know, it's kind of like, oh yeah, by the way, here you're in Millbrae. So I'm suggesting something more.
I just, I think that bold is not always better. And so understatement is a little classy, welcome to Millbrae, and our stamp is there. I'm hoping that we can do something on the other side to make it match so it does, we tie it in. I, I like your point of welcome to Millbrae a lot, but does it even say?
Councilman Oliver.
Actually, I agree with Councilmember Papin's comments. I feel that this sign as presented is, is insufficient. I think it needs to be significantly larger. And if, taking from Councilmember Leva, if the developer would like to do an archway over Millbrae Avenue or something to that effect, I think we could make that work. But in its current, the way it's currently presented is a significant diminishment from the current monument that's there. I also agree with Councilmember Schneider's perspective that the white is probably not the best background color. I think having maybe one of the more earth Tony looking designs that are shown here would be more aesthetically pleasing than the white background.
Yeah, I would say it's pretty underwhelming. The reason why I first looked at it, I thought, is this a Millbrae building or a monument sign? Because morally, it looks like this is the Millbrae building or it could be construed as a public building, the way it's, it's situated.
Kind of looks like a hospital sign right now.
Yeah, situated and the size kind of reminds me, it's like when you walk into a government building, you see that sort of signage. So I'm not trying to, I'm just saying that, and you know, I'm not even sure that corner is even the right place for a sign for Millbrae. Maybe someplace that's bigger, has bigger footprint or something.
Well, if I might, Mr. Mayor. This is, I think we've lost the perspective on this, but that is supposed to be a Millbrae monument. I get your signage on the other aspects of the property, but it's become extremely less than that as presented currently. And it needs to be, that's our monument and somehow it needs to be, show that this is Millbrae and I just don't think it does that.
I think people mistake it for an official Millbrae building. I think it needs to stand out.
I think if we define it more as a monument, and then you're the signage expert, I'm not, but that's not a monument showing that you're entering Millbrae. So however, that can be improved to be a monument that this is Millbrae, we would look, be interested in seeing that.
Okay, now let's move on to other signs?
Okay, I have a few comments about those signs. I'm not in favor of, I don't know if you guys are actually doing that big gateway sign on top that's kind of standing above the building. The, I guess the, the, yeah, that one.
On Millbrae Avenue?
Yeah.
That.
I'm not a big fan of something that's, it kind of, it's just, it just kind of reminds, I guess, you know, if you like art deco, I guess that's okay. But that's not what I prefer. And it seems kind of dangerous too, the way it's standing, because it's get really windy out there. So I don't know, but, I'm sorry, just let me finish and then I'll get to you. So the others and the, so I kind of prefer it more flush or something, maybe more monument. Is that supposed to signify the whole project, that signage?
It's an overall project identity, yeah. And it would, it wouldn't be flimsy.
Can you speak to the microphone for the, for the audience at home?
The overall project identity sign. And it, and it also would be substantially, I mean structurally sound. What we wanted to do is avoid some kind of a large panel sign, which adds a lot of mess.
I don't want a panel sign either, but, yeah. If I'm the only person who's not in Councilwoman Schneider.
I was just going to say, how many of us in Millbrae, when we say where we're from, we say, oh, if you've ever flown into San Francisco Airport, okay, then you've almost been in Millbrae. So I'm not opposed to big signage like that, whether you see it from your airplane flying in or out, or from 101, or from Bay Shore. I'm okay with that. I guess you can see that maybe the wind would catch it. We do have wind, remember, we have wind. I actually like art deco. I actually like the more traditional architecture. So for me, I'm, I'm stretching to go modern here, but the BART station created the look on either side of the railroad tracks. They, they led us to a much more modern design. So even going back to the Millbrae monument sign, it's very square. It matches this development perfectly. Our current sign is curvy and more Spanish, which is where I find our roots and I live in this lovely Spanish neighborhood. So to make the two monument signs match, either they're both going to have a little curve or they're both going to go straight. But I think it would take less of a feeling of you're walking into a government building on that corner retail spot if it's got similarities on either side. The question then is, angular to match BART, curvy on that side. But I don't mind the big sign. I know I talked to the city manager earlier about the signage on the other side of the hotel, the 101 side. Should it be big? Should it not? Is it irritating if it's big? I'm open to hearing from the pros. What we want are people to come to Millbrae and spend money in Millbrae. And if that means putting our name on something and we become Millbrae Station, I like that the gateway's smaller and the Millbrae Station is bigger in all of the signage.
Just, just a little bit of context here and I'll let my expert continue on, but, and these are great comments, thank you. But you know, our, our team is talented, accomplished, capable, competent and very knowledgeable about signage. And I do want to state that any sign that you see on here conforms to your existing city ordinances. And from a standpoint of wind and all that sort of stuff, every sign needs a building permit and it'll conform to the building department's standards. Just with that context, I wanted to add that back in there, but I'll let Mike get into the more details of the signage and the, and the artfulness of it.
Comment here?
What, Papin?
We understand that the regulations and that it has to pass all that, but we're here to talk about the design elements and we're going to talk about what we think on the signs part. I'm suggesting here, I'm a little confused on this diagram here. Is there a sign that goes across the street there?
That's the one to the plaza, right? There's, there's an archway into the plaza, right there? Oh no, that's on Roland's.
Where is that?
Yeah, there was, there was a rendering of that.
It's over the street.
Yeah, over the street there. I'm concerned about that height and buses coming in and out of there. So how high is that? Yeah, thank you. So what page are you on?
16.
Page 16?
Of the brochure, of the product that was handed to us tonight.
Yeah, that. So, okay, you've got, but I'm concerned if we, is that, you have a truck there, but some of these buses are pretty big. What's the clearance for the buses coming in and out of there? Because we don't want to be limited on the, you know, what's.
It's a DOT height, so it's like 13.6 minimum clearance.
So that clear a bus?
That's buses, trucks.
Okay, what about the fire trucks?
All trucks, yeah, the big semi trailer trucks, fire trucks.
Okay, we're sure about that. Because you've got some, you've got some height on those buildings.
I guarantee you, that's what.
Ladder trucks coming through. Okay, all right, all right. Let's just need to make sure on that one. That was my concern there on that.
So back on my comments on the sign, I, I'm not against the size, I'm just, just concerned it's sticking up over the building.
Back to that same one?
Yeah, the one, yeah. So, you know, it's, it's kind of freestanding out there and knowing that, I've seen our street signs on Millbrae get blown off its anchors. So, you know, you think that it wouldn't happen. So I just, that's what I'm concerned about. Yes, Councilman Leva.
On a positive note, I really like the tenant signage. I think that that's going to be something that we should, I mean, I would love to bring that downtown, even some sort of guideline. And it's still, everybody still has a style going on, but it all, it looks really nice together, so.
Thanks.
And I do like your comment about the lack of light boxes. I don't really like light boxes either. Councilman Oliver, do you have a question?
I mean, for giving feedback on the sign that you had brought up, I actually do like the way that it's presented there with the freestanding letters and the font, the art deco style font is similar to what we have in the city, the city logo that we approved a few years back. It's pretty similar to that, so, and I don't really have any concerns about the structural stability, but I'm sure that would be, it would be designed in a way that it would stay standing.
Okay, any other, any other comments about signs? Okay, so any other comments about the project?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor? I just have a question on some direction of the white monument sign, but also there's some different varieties for wood, that type of thing. I mean, I think when you look at the white sign, it's pretty stark, so maybe some introduction of some landscape material to soften. of some landscape material to soften it, and then anything that we can do to work with you to provide that symmetry on both sides of the street, to provide that gateway, if you're open to that, I think that that would be good.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think the concern is that it looks like a monument sign and not part of the building, so. Yes, Councilwoman Snyder?
One of the things that I did like about whatever font ultimately comes through, and I don't know, this is go back to planning and they choose the font, is how big you made the city seal. And the fact that that city seal is our history on that. It's got a little bit of everything, so I should tell you, I did like that part. The seal's much bigger, I like its proximity to the Millbrae part.
And I think with the seal in particular, the way that it can be interpreted, you know, it's not necessarily just a cast bronze seal, it can be interpreted architecturally and be, you know, really of high quality and a, you know, much more.
You're saying art in itself?
Yeah, art in itself.
It's a, it's a, what, a placastelle? I can't remember my art history terms, but yeah, it becomes art itself.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think the process here tonight to, to finish with signs is that, it sounds like redirect some modification sign program, soften that, come up with a few different ideas, maybe, maybe elevate it, maybe, you know, to where it's higher narrow or something, I mean, totally different design than that, or maybe it's that softening with some landscaping, but then something that we could provide symmetry to on both sides of the street to create that gateway on Millbrae Avenue as you're coming into the city. So we'd be happy to work with, work with the developer to come up with some other solutions.
Councilwoman Snyder?
I apologize, I should have had these together. One of the things that I hear from our clubs, Millbrae, for those of you to learn the history of Millbrae, we have very active community groups. And when we repainted those signs, and the Rotary sign, and the Millbrae Lions sign, and whichever other ones didn't go back up, our public was upset. So I like the clean look. I think you were saying here is a clean look, you don't have all the other community signs, but our community, and they're very active, they're our heart and soul, care about that. So you might want to consider that.
I don't disagree with that, and there's a, there's a reference to it in one of the, if you see, see here?
Ah, that's what those were, okay. I thought they were signs for the shops, when I looked at that. Thank you.
We'll study that as well with the.
Councilwoman Papin?
I'm a little confused here. Are we taking out that, the walkway on the overpass?
No.
Because this rendering here doesn't really show the walkway. It looks like it's been removed, that's my question.
Do you see it?
Yeah, it's subtle.
It does.
It looks like it's been.
Unless there's a stairway down into this first, I don't know.
I don't know, but it looks like it's been removed from that rendering.
We're not removing it. The rendering is missing the railing on there, but we're not changing that at all.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, appreciate it. Is that, can we move on from signs?
I know, I'm good with signs, anybody else? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's not cohesive here is that, as was mentioned, the iconic structure that exists there now is the station, is the parking structure and stuff. And what you have presented here, architecturally speaking, the layout's fine, but this looks like your, there's nothing significant about this, there's nothing, you throw out the words iconic, I see nothing iconic in this, because it does not, it's not cohesive in bringing in the station as it exists now. This looks like every single development, and it's too boxy and stark in many places for me. I wish that the designs would incorporate more the iconicness of the existing station, which seems to be cut out of every angle here. What's going to happen to even the clock on the parking structure? That appears to, we can't see how that's, you can't really see the incorporation into what exists there now. I have no problem with this setup as is, but the architecture to me is just regular, it's like boxes. And particularly in certain angles here, it's very, very stark. And that is something, this is the, again, largest intermodal center west of the Mississippi. You think that we could somehow incorporate that extremely iconic architecture from the station as it exists now into something better than what I see here, which to me is boxes? So I'm disappointed in that aspect of it. Those blank walls right there, what, you've slapped windows on the side, it's just, it's way too stark, there's nothing unique about this. I could drive anywhere, down the peninsula, down South City, see the same, same type of stuff. And the coloring there for the corner building, it kind of looks like circus, circus to me. What makes that unique? I, I don't get it. You know, if it had more of a metallic kind of thing, it would fit in with the station area, or a glass type of thing. But what's up with those colors there? I don't, I don't understand.
We respectfully disagree. Our development team that we have here is second to none in our opinion. We worked over several years to get to where we're at. I'll have Chek Tang take you through a little bit of history, how we got.
No, 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 you don't need to do the history for me here, sir. We got into this point to discuss the design aspects, and we're giving you our input on that. This is our opportunity here. Now, I get very frustrated when you try to throw up, well, we've been working on this for years and years and years. The city of Millbrae had this project for two years, and they passed the elements, okay? Now we're talking about design. This is our first opportunity as a city council to discuss that and how we feel about it. So you're hearing how I feel about it. This to me is not quote unquote iconic, as you are presenting to us here. Buildings on sites like this, San Jose is about to take ten years to develop that. So to say that, you know, we've been doing this for years and years and years, I know where you've been. You've been before the city of Millbrae for about two years now. That is exceptionally fast. So we are here tonight to discuss what our feelings are about this design element, and I will disagree with you. I don't think that this is sufficient enough. I think this, many aspects of this just look like ordinary boxes, and there's a lot of stark aspects to this, do not incorporate the iconic building that exists there now. So that's my opinion.
Okay, Councilwoman Snyder?
Having said that I prefer more classic historic, I actually am pretty happy with the way everything looks. I like the way the four buildings are all different, but they all, they all have their own unique points of view. I like that there's so many changes in the facade. My one concern overall is the white. I think of us as a foggy city. I know we're not, but I think of us as fog, and when you've got too much white or gray, it blends in with the atmosphere. And I like more color. Maybe it's because I've been fortunate enough to go to Puerto Rico or other places where they include so much more color into their buildings, and it brings some life to it. I like your differences in elevation, I like that you have, I think, third floor level piazzas on that, and we talked about that at an earlier council meeting. To me, as long as the people in the affordable housing unit have access to that, I'm a happy person. But I do have a couple of specifics. I come from the environmental side, since you have new people here. My greatest concern for any of our buildings is glass. And the new studies keep coming out with how many birds are killed by our glass buildings on that. And I understand that the technology in glass has improved, and I don't know from what I've read if the glass that you're using is more bird friendly. So I just read my Audubon magazine last month, and it talked about a new study with the phenomenal number of birds that are being killed in cities around the country. So that would be one, I can just throw these out here with you. So glass is one of mine, birds. I love having as much greenery as we can build in, but with trees means birds means window kills, or window hits on that, or window strikes, I believe. Or maybe we should just take it there. My other ones are kind of more on the art side. If you can maintain, as you go through the rest of the design review, a much changes in the facade so they're not flat, and that they have that difference in interest, then I am pleased with that, and I think you've done a pretty good job with that. I like the new curve on, if there's anything that's reflection of the BART station on the affordable housing building on 6A, is that 6A? 6A, it's got that curve in it now, that's a nice reflection. My concern on 6A is people coming out of the parking garage and those headlights flashing into somebody's apartment. So that would be, and I didn't see any screening in there, but maybe now those aren't ground floor apartments, maybe that's a public use area. So just how the light will affect the people living there. I have other questions, but that's sort of on that category. You want me to go into art?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Finish this building part.
Well, let me throw a tooth, art, that's art. Two of my other questions, tonight we're going to get to chevron, and chevron is coming through a design review, and it's your neighbor there, and they talk about keeping a stretch of oleanders, which again, when I see oleanders, I think of freeway plantings. So I never think of them as really a high quality planting, and the chevron design talks about keeping those, but it's right on the border of your piazza for the hotel. So I don't know if the two of you are talking to each other to make sure that there's some compatibility and really making it into a nice place. I also envision someday, we're going to be able to advertise being on the Bay Trail and being on the Ridge Trail, and maybe that's a way to bring people in. And we want a place, in my cycling days, when we used to do 100 or 150 miles in a day, a place where we can refill, and this says the same to the chevron people in the audience, you know, a nice place for our cyclists or our pedestrians to come and have a place to sit while they refresh and spend some money here on that. So I'm a little bit concerned about that oleander strip that won't become a swale either. I understand if we keep the same landscaping, we won't have a swale. I want as many swales as we can possibly have, as much permeable pavement as we can possibly have. Everything that can move us in the direction of green architecture and be the demonstration for the rest of the city, what all of us as residents will need to do with our own property. I'm hoping that you're going to be that example, and I appreciate all the, the organic aspects that you put in. Under, I work in the recycling field, and one of my specialty areas was demolition areas, and you talk about removing a heck of a lot of trees. And generally what that means is people cut them out. So I don't know if you have plans to at least release them, give them away to the public if you don't want to reuse them. Street trees have a very tough life, parking lot trees have a very tough life. I'm assuming, and I didn't get enough chance to go and do science on your trees, that they're the ones that have the best chance of surviving in a, in an asphalt jungle, basically. But if we can have a reuse plan for those trees, one way or another, I'd love to see that. Oleander, chevron planting trees, utility boxes as semi art, there is a big utility box right in front of where the, the signage we talked about. I went through the area today, there's two big utility boxes, which to me say art platform. But I don't think you want those utility boxes right there. So that's a question for the city, where is the traffic, where are the traffic light boxes going? But maybe that's something that happens in the future. With that, the rest of mine is art.
Thank you. Any other comments on the building designs?
So Councilmember Papin, I'm trying to really dig into this because I feel your frustration. And I don't want you to be frustrated, but I'm having a hard time seeing boxes here. I see that one picture right there to the right hand side where it's windows there, but I'm actually really impressed by, like, if you look at 2A, .04, 5A, with the dimensions of all four buildings, I mean, all four sides of every building.
Can you show me the?
What are you looking at?
Oh.
I'm, I'm really impressed, and I will, I will say that if you're talking, comparing this to South City or San Carlos, I think it's worlds apart.
That's the office building, though. I think she's talking about the residential.
Well, here's one example. Can you see this?
I see your example, but I want you to look from the helicopter view.
Helicopter view.
Helicopter view, and yes, you're going to have some, we do have some square buildings here.
I don't have anything square here, let me be.
Let me finish here for a sec.
Sure, please.
What, what I really see that I really like is the newer buildings that we do have in our city on the El Camino, like the Bellamore or the new, the newer apartment condo type buildings, this is going to fit really nice. And I like, I like the way that it's going to not just be, my biggest fear was this is going to be another city, and I didn't want to tear our city apart. So I see a real nice gradual, gradual old trend, Spanish style neighborhood through our downtown, to the El Camino, to the BART station, and it's not too modern for me. I think it's very appealing.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
Thank you. So, and I'm not saying too modern by any means here. What I'm saying is that if you look at your helicopter view here, you have a very iconic building in the station area as it exists now.
Correct.
Which you are completely cutting off the clock, by the way, but I don't think there's any way to avoid that, because they have to have their, their height there. So the iconicness of the station area, which you can see there as it exists now, I don't think that the design as it's presented here actually incorporates that in these buildings, some of which I find to be very boxy. I think we, as council members, have a fiduciary duty not to settle for what you see at every single other station here, which much of this is. Now, the office building, as you mentioned, probably is more unique than I've seen, but as far as the apartment buildings, it's just like, I worry about those, and I don't like at all, that those boxy things, like that one I showed you looking down the corridor, or even, I mean, this whole thing, this looks like.
Looks like a monolith.
I mean, yeah, it looks like every other apartment complex you're going to pass, so Lake Merced kind of thing.
I mean, with all due respect, do you think it might be the orange?
Well, the orange for sure, but no, I think more, a little more than that is that this is, that really does nothing for me. It looks like I'm driving into the projects.
I'd give it a little bit more than that, please.
Well, I think, in particular, that's, I don't think we should be settling, and I think that this can be done in a manner that shows more reflective of the iconic nature of what the station is now. I'm not, I, I think that this is.
If I may just add a little color to the comments, I appreciate the comment, first of all. I think it's important to look at the context of a plan, maybe we do this.
The plan as it's set up, fine.
But I think it's important to note that, you know, a parking garage doesn't make a very vibrant district. And I think that my opening remark was, we're creating uptown Millbrae here, we're creating a district. The building, I'm an architect and urban designer, but it's interesting coming from me, the building at certain areas should be a civic, a civic center should be a really iconic building. To me, a district, creating a district, the building should be well-mannered, excellent design, but it shouldn't be screaming for attention. To me, we have allowed the BART station, the canopy of the BART station to be itself. We've created a new front to this district that is much more pedestrian oriented, much more vibrant, much more like a city fabric, right? And that's the goal. If you look at your plan, so given that facade on Millbrae Avenue that you mentioned, your plan, specific plan actually asked for urban edge along that plan. We had worked with your staff and other experts to say, that's not a really good way, because you don't want to create a wall all the way along the Millbrae Avenue. We actually have worked with staff to create a different kind of street wall that makes it, that experience a lot more interesting. So, I mean, from our point of view, architect, good architecture start from the good urban design, the good framework, but the good massing, a good interface with the existing context, and that's what we started from, so.
Councilman Halliburton, did you want to say something?
Just one other comment that I really can't let stand. Again, we've got a cadre of experts here that have presented a tremendously well-designed project, and to, to reference this, this, our, our development as it looks like you're walking into the projects, just is unfounded. walking into the projects, just is unfounded, and it's not right. We spent a lot of time and money, we've worked very closely with your staff, we took specific direction as to how these buildings were designed from your staff, and every element of these buildings conform with your specific plan. Everything in here conforms with your specific plan. So I understand if you don't like colors or things like that, but we're, we're in conformance, and this is not a project or inference to a ghetto, any of that. This is a $400 million project. We have one of the best contractors in California building this. We have a number of the best architects in the country working on this project. And again, we'll, we'll take your comments, and we're here to take your comments, but to a limit. We've, we presented a great project for you here, and we're very excited about putting it together.
Counselman.
I'm sorry. Okay, good.
Have a chance. Okay, you go for then to counsel.
Can I just add one thing? When you were talking, good design and all of that, but materials. So I, my guess is that planning has probably seen or been able to touch the materials, and maybe you can tell us a little bit about the materials you're using, because the quality of a, of a project is also in its materials.
Hang on, let's, let's, hang on, let's just finish one conversation. Let's get there, let's get there, let's get there. But let's, let's finish this conversation we're having about the design first.
Part of this whole process is that the developer comes before the planning commission and the city council. So you have to deal with we as the elected people and what our citizens are looking for in a project. We understand the station plan, we approve the station plan. Every discussion before this was, yeah, we'll get down to the design elements, we'll deal with that later. This is what we're dealing with now. These are the opinions that we are presenting. So we have a right to represent our people and present those opinions now. Nothing is to degrade your architecture and all of that, but I don't think we should be settling for show, I could pull out some other projects in other transportation areas that are more consistent with a transportation center. I believe you're creating a downtown thing here, but we're creating also the transportation center. This, to me, as it's presently presented, is like any, I pull out any other BART station, and this is what you're getting here. That is my disappointment in how it is presented, and this is where we are as a council. So for the developer, yeah, we know how much money you spent, we know all of that, we know what we've been through here, but this is part of the process, and this is what the council is here to do our job, to represent what we as residents and a city will have to be living with and looking at each and every day. So I thank you for being here, but this is why we're having a discussion.
Okay, so I think that everybody has looking out for their best interest here. It is a big project, it's a project that the developers are proud of, and, and council members are looking for a project that the city can be proud of. So we're going to ask everybody to have, just, you know, just have some respect for each other in terms of all, we're just looking out for the best of our, our interest, and it's not to be personal. So, Councilman Holber.
Yes, well, first of all, I generally do like most of the architecture here and the general themes and elements that are included. I think as to Councilwoman Pappin's points, if, you know, if, if you can identify a few things that would make it a bit more iconic, I think we would be willing to entertain those suggestions. I don't see how, I don't see what that is, though, in looking at this designs as they're currently presented to us. I also agree with Councilwoman Schneider's point that there's, I think, a bit too much white in the, in the designs, especially on that corner facing the overpass on Millbrae Avenue. It looks like it was originally more white, and it was reduced to just that corner section, but I don't think it's the best use of color there. And as well as on the side of the affordable housing building, I don't know if that's the backside facing the Aviador neighborhood, but that's a very plain drab-looking white siding that I think needs to be improved.
Consistent with some of the planning commission comments that were heard, and so we can continue to work toward the color schemes.
So I, we'll get to that.
One other comment. I do like the, you know, the variations in building heights and colors along Millbrae Avenue. I think it does make it look more like a, sort of like a skyline type of structure, so I do appreciate that that was amended with our staff's input.
So I like your reference about Santana Row. And the like thing about Santana Row is that the buildings were articulated in different heights and stuff, so you felt like you were in a piazza, which was really nice. I like the fact that you have some offsetting parts of this building, but there is some things that you could do to break up the massing, which is, you know, the straight height in the walls, it looks a little mon, I think, if anything, they look monolithic at some sides of this, particularly if you look at right behind the signs, the white part, it's kind of monolithic, so you can break it up a little bit. I understand Councilwoman Pappin's view, you know, you have a beautiful iconic BART station that's going to be completely covered by, you know, hidden by this until you go over the overpass, and that's the only time you're really going to see the station. So I think that if you can incorporate some of those architectural features in this, in this project, it'd go a long way in, in transitioning into it. Otherwise, it's just a stark thing. I, I like orange, except orange doesn't really go with this building because, because we have those storage units, you know, nearby, they're all orange, and I don't think you want to be associated with, you know, those storage buildings, so. But, I mean, I, I think, I think if, if anything, you could probably soften the colors to make it more soft and flow better with the station, the adjacent station. So, you know, I think you had a good start. I really liked the office building, and then that's, that's broken up, it's got a lot of light, it's, looks like it's very energy efficient. I really like that. I like the gardening, the terrace and the gardens. Anyway, I want to talk about the, the Basile that's along Millbrae Avenue and Aviador later, but let's get to materials, which Councilwoman Snyder was. Are we done with buildings? No, okay, I'm sorry. Well, stay in buildings.
Okay. Yeah, and so I agree with my colleague on the, just the color scheme as presented here is problematic. Again, I think it demeans the project overall as it's presented here. I would go the opposite way, dramatically speaking, the station area, the station itself, again, is an iconic building, so if it could somehow be more consistent with that, that would be helpful. The office building, I think I have less of a problem with, and this A6 building, where you've got some like diamond kind of things here, what's that about?
It's page 6A, A4.04.
So the affordable.
6A.
6A.
6A is a little odd.
It's, yeah.
Well, I mean, they're trying.
Down here, it seems to fit better, this here, again, the colors, but.
Oh, that's the affordable housing.
That's the affordable housing component.
Probably an attempt to give it identity.
It's not giving it identity, it's kind of.
Okay.
I mean, and I like the roof line there, but.
The patterns?
Yeah.
So the, that's actually the portion that's fronting at the back of the site by the creek across from the.
The neighbors still have to look at something like that, and it's.
That's Rollins Road.
It says it's Rollins Road.
Yeah, it's fronting along Rollins Road, but it's really toward the back of the site, you know, toward the creek. So the idea is that there's a stair, I believe it's a stairwell, and it's a way of kind of articulating that stairwell to give some visual interest. It's basically at the very back of the site.
Is it a solid or is it a screen?
It's a solid.
It's a wall.
It's just basically different.
It's hiding the stairwell, in other words.
Right.
Well, it's not doing it. I, you know, the whole idea here is that you are not really, architecturally speaking, the building should be more consistent. You don't want to say, okay, yeah, this is your affordable housing building, and, you know, here it is. We all along have said it should not even appear to be a lesser structure. So I do like the roof line there, but I have, my major problems are with the housing units and how they are currently presented. I just think that this is too important a site to be treated in the usual fashion here. The colors are very problematic, and I think the starkness of how they're presented is problematic for me. I just.
If I may add, I think, you know, for a lot of the high-density housing, there is mention about Santana Row. If you look at Santana Row, they're basically series of boxes with holes in the middle, right? They're composed together and create this main street. I think, given the context we have here, I think this exhibit is really important to show, is that we created a lot of the articulation in the building kind of placement and the formatting, so that it breaks up the roof line, it breaks up the massing, it creates a lot of undulations, a lot of, you know, kind of indoor-outdoor kind of relationship. And I think that's really the beginning of the, the context of the architecture, is not just pasting, you know, kind of beautiful facade on buildings, and I think this is a much more integrated way of designing building. Again, going back to creating a district, not creating, you know, just iconic buildings. I think the building needs to work together. I think the other thing is really important to show, this is maybe a difference of opinions, I, I prefer to hide that garage, to be honest with you, to the extent that to create a new front, a new street, new vibrancy, instead of just seeing the garage that holds, you know, a couple of thousand cars. The canopy, at the end of the day, is still very visible over El Camino Real, driving down Millbrae. That canopy, to me, is the iconic feature of the station, right? And so that one is clearly feature along with the architecture of the office building and kind of the more iconic nature of the residential building that fronts onto, onto that, that station area. And that's what I meant by iconic, not the entire building to be, project to be iconic, but there's a certain portion of it, this portion of the project here, that takes on a much more stronger presence relating to El Camino Real, along with the edge of the.
That's going to be obscured, most of that's going to be obscured by new development, so just to let you know.
But, I mean, at, at the end of the day, if you look at a lot of, by the way, one of the things that we hearken back to is a lot of the, the transportation stations in Europe. I mean, it's, you don't just.
Can you speak into the, I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic for the audience?
A lot of it is really kind of going to the station or Asia for that matter, is really about going to a district, it's not about a terminal. And I think that's really where the president of this project should be, and that, by the way, it conforms to your, your vision that you have written a couple of years back. We didn't invent this. This is pulling out and being compliant with your plans, so.
Okay, hang on, can we, okay.
Well, I mean, you keep mentioning Santana Row, so I'm pulling up a picture here. Okay, it has some of the colors you're suggesting here, but the refinement of what's presented on Santana Row, which makes it very unique and very nice, is not there.
Santana Row is meant to be an Italianated village.
A what?
Santana Row is, even the name itself, Santana Row is meant to be a very Mediterranean, Italianated, Italianated village. And this is not what this uptowns, you know, the conceive, the conception of this vision is about a very contemporary uptown district, it's different than the downtown here. And so I think there is a, it, it, we don't want to, the idea is the vibrancy of a Santana Row, but we don't want to just transport Santana Row here, there's no context of a Santana Row here.
Well, I was confused. You guys kept mentioning that, and.
No, the Santana Row is really a, 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 pardon, is, is an analogy to the kind of public spaces, the pedestrian vibrancy and all that. It's not about, you know, putting Santana Row architecturally on this site, that's absolutely not our intent.
Councilwoman Snyder.
I just wanted to go back with colors. I like the colors. I think you've done a pretty good job of blending the different buildings, they all have a separate, unique scheme. In my family, we have a joke about orange. Orange is one of those colors that was out for a long time, but has been back in style for a pretty long time. But the rest of the colors, to me, are like taking the, the Bellamore building, which is across the street on El Camino with those vibrant browns, and to me, it's more terracotta than it's orange. So I wonder if you were trying to make me happy by taking the Mediterranean colors, which you couldn't have, because as much as I'd love a Mediterranean building, this side of the building is what Councilwoman Aliva said, we're coming from the older part of town that's Spanish, the, as soon as they built that BART station, that dictated the forms that we're going to have in this area. Otherwise, then you have glaring architectural styles next to each other. So again, I think you've done a pretty good job. I appreciate Mr. Holber saying that the white might be a little bit too white, if you can do a little bit more on that. I agree with Councilwoman Pappin, when I looked at that geometric back there, maybe there's something that can become a little more artsy. That community, just so that you know, for years looked at some apartments that were probably at our time, our lowest-income apartments. So keep that in mind, that, that we want them to integrate with this community, make them happy, make it something that speaks a little bit on there. I'd even love to see a, a green wall. It's fairly tall, though, to try to do a green wall, but maybe there's something a little bit more cross into the organic area with that.
I think that's, that's actually a very interesting idea, is to make that more, almost like a public arts piece to the community.
Well, it is public art. The geometric design right there is art, but.
By the way, for the color, I think we definitely will look at the color based on the comments, but I think one of the things that we want to look at, and Mike has referred to, is maybe a little bit more, the, the orange, instead of like a more primary orange, that it could be more rustic, or more like, almost like a burnt orange color. So it's a little bit more classier and more, more rustic.
I mean, more Goganish than Calder or Mondrian, if we're going to go that direction.
Not sherbet orange, okay. So, all right, any other comments on something else on the project?
Well, yeah, we do, still.
I think Councilwoman Snyder had.
We're ready for her.
Well, you're not, you want to talk about materials? You said you wanted.
Oh, materials, yes, please.
So we have all the boards here. This is material board for the office building, so maybe.
Maybe you could use the hand mic, then the audience can hear what you're saying, yeah.
I'm sorry. This is, I'm sorry, this is the office building, sorry. Here's our office architect, I want him to get a sense of the.
Great, thanks.
The building here.
Hi, everybody. I haven't had a chance to speak with you before. Bob Giannini, Form 4 Architecture, so we are the architects for the office building, which is really the office retail building, because the whole bottom is the retail point. But the materials we're talking about at people level, so what you see when you're at the retail level is this, this lower piece, and we're using this tile here, which is this kind of burnished rust tile where people can get right up to it. Right above it, this is actually wood, that's the band that sort of hides the parking garage that's behind. So you can see the, this is the wood that we're planning to use right here. And when you look at the building, you can kind of see, you can sort of see the depiction of the retail and the parking with the glassy office building sort of sitting on top. We do have these big roof overhangs, which was actually inspired by the station, the idea of the big canopy kind of roofs that have trellis slots in them, and then to warm the whole building up, the same wood is used as the soffit underneath the, those big parasol kind of overhangs. And actually, from a sustainability point of view, in an office building, that's kind of one of the best ways to, if you can shade the glass, that's one of the most effective things you can do, and so that's what this building does. Then we've got this screen that kind of comes down facing BART and facing Rollins Road, which is clear glass, all the glass, by the way, is, is clear glass. And you can kind of see that, what happens is we have glass at the office piece, and then when it hides the garage, it's kind of interesting to sort of see that there is garage behind there, so we're proposing more of an obscure kind of patterned glass for that piece of the building. There's also kind of an interesting glass piece that forms sort of the top piece of all the retail, that's. all the retail, that's, um, that is this right here, which is a little bit, um, specular. So it gives a little bit of a, uh, uh, an accent to sort of the building and, and kind of call out the retail. And then finally, it was really important that the office building not be just a glassy office building like you'd see in Silicon Valley, given that it's right across the street from residential and BART and, and all the hotel and different kind of uses. So the building's considerably more articulated, and we've pulled out these three big bay windows to kind of make, sort of break it as it goes along. But the body of the building, behind, uh, the bay windows, is actually this blue and yellow color stucco. So, again, we used materials that weren't too harsh, not concrete, not stuff that's a lot more people scale, and, uh, has a little bit of color, subtle, but, but that's kind of the thought of the office building, is to be that transition from the station to the residential, and to make the building feel warm and have more of a residential scale than a typical office building would.
Bob, can you refer to the bird safety that was mentioned earlier?
Yeah, the interesting thing, so, that is a really important topic and something we've studied a lot. What's interesting is, um, the first thing is, is this the kind of site that would attract birds? And you're right, when you do plant trees, and we are planting palm trees up on the fourth floor, you do, you do attract birds. However, in an urban environment, you don't get the kind of bird strikes that you get sort of, uh, in more rural areas or whatever, where the bird sees the reflection of a big field of grass and dives into it. So, there would be bird strikes, but if you did, there would be bird strikes in any building, probably at home you have them, but, um, uh, but in this kind of environment, where we've got sort of the narrow garden lane, and it's sort of buried, um, in the other, uh, between the other buildings, it would be unusual for, for a lot of, for bird strikes to really be a problem.
And also, we're working on a project in Mountain View that has similar concerns of a bird strike, these kind of-
Microphone.
The, the, kind of the combination of these fitted glass, along with a transparent glass, also allows for that shallowing to kind of mitigate the bird strikes.
The article that was just recently published in the Audubon Magazine was at some current tech campuses, and they weren't on our Pacific Flyway, they were on the Eastern Flyway. And even, and they were, I'm trying to think if it was Baltimore, or Chicago, or one of the major cities back east, and they were having surprising numbers, because birds are learning how to adapt. So I'm not necessarily talking about shorebirds or seagulls that the airports worrying about, I'm talking about more likely the sparrows, the finches, the robins, uh, I don't know what bird likes to live in palm trees, rats like to live in palm trees. But, I, I don't want to, I, I know that there's new glass technology, I know they've been working on it, and if we can look at that, then we can prevent that, your buildings from being known as bird killers. We would prefer not to be known as bird killers.
Yes, understood.
Do any of these windows open?
No, not in this building.
Why not? What's, what's, what do you got against fresh air?
There's a couple, there's a couple of reasons why oper- so we do do operable windows in office buildings, but, um, generally in, in office buildings that are, uh, user, uh, owner occupied, like where a company owns the entire building, this would be a multi-tenant building. The problem with operable windows is somebody has to go around at the end of the day and shut all the windows. Also, when you're in an office building, and these office buildings will probably be large, open floor plates, whoever, so you might have four hundred, a hundred people sort of up on this floor, who decides if the window wants to be open? And then who's going to remember to close it at night? So, there are sort of those sociological issues of windows, uh, you make somebody happy because you open the window, you make somebody sad because you open the window. And, uh, then of course, there's the air conditioning problem of when you open the window, it short-circuits and all the conditioned air sort of goes out. So, I'm not against fresh air, but there are a lot of sort of pragmatic issues that make it very difficult in, in a common office building.
Are any of these lead buildings, as far as-
The building, per the city's requirement, the building will be lead equivalent, yeah, lead silver.
Okay, so the prime example of an office building that actually works and gives you a little, um, there are little bits of fresh air. So the San Francisco PUC building is a work of art, in that some of the offices, like the bottom part of the window opens, so some can get a little bit of fresh air.
Right.
Um, now you're suggesting a different structure here, that these would be big, like this room, right, kind of thing? That offices would be cubicles and that kind of stuff?
Uh, currently, you know, most commonly now, they're benching and things like that, and people like to, it's very possible the entire floor might be completely open. That would be the most current trend in the way offices are being done in the Bay Area.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, environmentally speaking, fresh air's a good thing, once in a while. I understand what you're saying, it's a different people's needs and stuff like that, but it always seems unusual, for those of us who have to work in office buildings, that you can't even get small windows to open.
The building does have, um, many, many decks on it, and there are ways, that's the way we sort of address that, is, if you look at the office building, there's a whole series of balconies kind of along the entire length, and people are, people can go out, in a way we kind of encourage that, as a way for people to have different work settings and, and be able to use the building that way.
Okay, um, are we done with materials then? Can we move on to, yes?
One building.
Okay, right.
Uh, Scott McGill with ACRM Architects, I don't believe we've spoken before. The materials on the hotel are reflective of the other materials that are on the office building and also on the retail, are the retail and apartments. We introduced rainscreen material that you see, that would be throughout the, um, ground floor area, and then also up onto some portions on the upper floors, and then we're using a striated, uh, EFS panel that would be introduced to create a horizontal striated feeling across the, um, the larger portions of the building. And then, on certain aspects of the lower floor, we're introducing a, a high-quality stone mural.
So the quality materials are, um, generally on the base, and then these kind of rainscreen materials, actually very expensive material that is on part of the building, as accent of the building. Consistent with the hotel, um, the market rate residential building is, the reason why you see so much of the color on this board is because we have so many components of the building, that we're creating more varieties of materials and colors. So, we don't have the actual materials here, but there's actually a lot of tile materials on the base of the retail, which gives a lot of different textural elements, especially at the base of the retail. And then on the building itself, we actually have, uh, not just plaster, but also a rainscreen system that you see here, that's compatible with the hotel, as well as the, uh, portion of the office building, uh, as well as, uh, these windows are, uh, for residential-sized window, these VPI windows are actually extremely large window, that gives it, uh, a more commercial look, instead of residential look. Um, in addition to other kind of more canopy or signage, uh, canopy details and, and awning kind of conditions that we have on, on the building. So, um, the colors, we talked about, and we can, uh, take a look at the, kind of modify the, the actual plaster or the, the building colors. Then lastly, is the, uh-
Before you move on to that, um, so as far as the hotel, um, colors here, you know, this is what's going to be viewed from the highway and everything else, this is really going to be the thing that people see the most, if they don't even go into the station area. Um, I would, would have hoped that this would have been a little more dramatic, we've got, the airport is putting up their grand hotel right now, um, and the airport's a prime example of how the, their hotel architecture matches the architecture from the airport. So, I would have hoped that this would have been a little more, um, dramatic, um, you've got the basic structure here, but it's kind of like, you've reduced the, um, design just to fit in with the housing, and-
Well, I think, the hotel architects can speak for the design, but I think the dramatic feature of this building is that glass bridge that spans between the street. To me, you know, on the building is not-
What, what, what one are you talking about? Sorry, excuse-
If you look at the aerial, there's kind of a glass bridge that literally spanned over the public street that goes underneath it. And I think, um, you know, we have to pick and choose our battles on design, but I think on the hotel project, that really is the iconic feature that, that features that building. It's not just a little piece of trim here, a little trim, you know, that's a big feature that, uh, pretty costly feature to, 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 to have on, on the hotel project.
Is that a fair statement?
Well, I like, I like the bridge thing there, I mean, that's great. Um, I would have hoped that it could be more dramatic here. It kind of looks like the ground level, is that, which material do you have there? It kind of just looks like stucco on the ground level there.
But, that would be the masonry material around the base, we've got the, the flood control height, the, for the FEMA height that we have to maintain.
Yeah, good luck with that one. Is this building going to float?
Unfortunately. So that's across our base, a very high-quality material, the base, very, very, uh, textural, you could actually go out and touch it. Um, and then this is the rainscreen material, which would be in this coloration versus that color, but it would be in this pattern.
Yeah, I'm not understanding how that incorporates here. Um, so as far as your building, um, can we bring up the building itself? I think it's B6. Could you show me how those are going to be?
Oops.
Or 6B, sorry?
Sorry.
Oh, wait, yeah, so you wait, you eat, there, there. Okay, so the little dark one is at the very bottom there.
So the very bot- so the very bottom here, you would have the, the striated tile material, stone material.
Mm-hmm.
And then you've got the rainscreen material across here, and then it also takes on some of the, the box areas that you've mentioned previously, as a kind of a, almost a tower element. The hotel has an overriding height factor in it, and that-
Yeah, we know.
We're tied with FAA, so it's getting a little bit squat, but as he, as we brought up earlier, this central portion we're trying to create is almost, it's not only a bridge, but it's also a lantern from-
Oh, that's cool.
Highway 101.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, your overall setup here and your lantern thing, that's great, wonderful. I would like, when you saw that tower stuff there, and the, um, so I guess it's your, your colors there, I would like to see more drama, so if you went darker there or something, that it stood out more, um, as a, um, I think it becomes a more elegant hotel, if it's like, more dramatic, um, just color-wise, on those surrounding areas there. What's the, the middle part there? You've got, you, you pointed out the tower things, but that next two colored, these things here, that part?
This is the gym, right here.
No, no, not the gym, this, um-
Or like, the, the gray?
Uh, here.
No, it's like a dark color.
On the left side?
What do you got here? What is that?
Oh, the, these would be a metal trim, so this would be all metal panel, so it'd be a, almost a charcoal color.
Yeah, I think that would, that's nice, I think, just your, your tower areas in the lighter color, it's, the more dramatic you can make it there, the more the hotel would pop, with your lantern and everything else, it just, um, I think it needs to just be a little more drama, and I think you could, a darker color would make that more significant a building.
I think, given that we're going to look at the color palette for all the buildings, I think one thing that I want to caution is, you know, we need to look at all four buildings together in terms of the color selection, not to have-
Well, good point, because I still don't like the orange on-
So, uh, but, um, I, I think, given that, you know, we have some specific conditions, but we're look, I, I think we have to examine the color scheme with the buildings together, because they kind of work together, so we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, your, your comments are well-founded, and the, the actual materials and colors that you're seeing here are prior to that comment, it was more or less to keep in context with the rest of the development and keep it more cohesive, but yet each identity, each building would have its own identity. But, yeah, I, we're wanting to try to make this more of an iconic gateway entry building, and it's something certainly we can evaluate.
Councilman Holber?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pappan, are you referring to the, on the right side there, the corner facing Millbrae Avenue?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at this, right?
Just the whole side of the building.
Yeah, I mean, you've got the basic structure, and this is supposed to be their lantern area here, I think they've actually lessened the building in order to incorporate it into the housing buildings, which I'm not at all happy with. Um, this is what you're going to see from, like, 101 and stuff, I think this can be a very, um, dramatic building, if these, this aspect was darker and, well, it's kind of on both sides, so.
Also on the highlight is not just the color, but also there's a change in material. The, the rainscreen that was referred to on that end building is actually, um, a very different contrast than if you were to do that in plaster. So I think it's not just a color change, but also a material change, which is significant, so.
Mr. Mer, I have a quick question, if I may. So, on the fiber cement panels, on the plan you're showing is like a charcoal gray, but on that board, you're showing a, uh, white, is that, uh, is that actually going to be the charcoal gray?
No, the charcoal gray color is actually this color, this is just shown for the pattern.
Okay, so, so this is not-
That's an old, you know, that was, that was actually an old photograph, this is the actual, this is the actual material, but not this color, it'll be in the dark color.
Okay, so folks-
This just shows the texture of the material panel.
It's not the actual color. Uh, so we have, it's quarter to nine, and we have, uh, items still on, on our agenda, so if we can just speed up our, our comments, it'd be appreciated.
Mr. Holber?
Sorry, I had one more comment about the hotel, um, building, um, and this is sort of more of a general comment than a, about the materials, but I think that corner right on Millbrae Avenue and Rollins, looking at that now, is, it's a bit flat to me, um, a little bit sort of boxy and, you know, at least compared to, you know, across the street, where, um, you know, the Millbrae entryway monument sign would be, um, which has-
This corner right here on the screen.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Just, just comparing, you know, the two sides, the intersection, we have some differentiation and, you know, the balconies coming out and, um, you know, different differentiation on the building facade here, versus the hotel side is a bit more flat and subdued. So I think if that could be, and I don't know what the answer necessarily is, but to have maybe a little bit more variety there, or, and something besides just a flat wall, a flat square, right angle type of, um, you know, design there, that can make it be a little bit more iconic in terms of the entryway to the station.
You can take a look at the interior program, see how we may get some variations.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? I, I do have, if I may-
Oh, you go ahead then, Mr. Mer.
Um, aviador, um, there's probably some functionality that, why you kept it that way, but I'm wondering, this is a question for city and the architect, perhaps we can utilize that, uh, street for more parking, because we were about to lose 200 parking space or 500 parking spaces.
You can't, I'm sorry, the aviador, that one street, no, there's, it's not a part of this project, nobody can park there. It's been restricted for years.
We can't park, oh?
No, they're trying to use it as like a shuttle turnaround and stuff, we have, they promised like the neighbors that that street would not be used.
Well, that's why I was saying, use it for parking.
Nope.
That way you-
I think there, there are two different aviadors, there's the aviador in that residential neighborhood, and then the end of that street is also referred to as aviador, it doesn't connect through.
Right, it's not a part of this project, the developer was not allowed to use that as counting for parking spaces, so you're getting far beyond, that street's just not, we don't count that.
I know, we don't count it, but can we use it? Uh, Councilwoman-
Except, isn't the developer planting new trees on that portion? So they're adding quite a bit of, I just walked and drove it earlier today, and to me, it's more of an issue with the Chevron gas station than it is right now, but yeah, we agreed during the process that trees would get planted, and someday, the Bay Trail is going to have some kind of aspect through there, but we're not there yet. So when we start talking about the overpass over 101 with the new bike pedestrian overpass and connectivity on Bay Trail, we'll be back addressing that street. At least, that's how I look at it. It, to me, it's a bunch of wasted asphalt right now, and it's non-permeable.
Um-
Yes.
I know you're-
Yes.
I know you're concerned about the time here, Mr. Mayor, but we still had a lot to cover, so I think you're going to have to try to continue this discussion. You haven't even gotten into art or anything like that, and we still have a lot of agenda items.
My art could be one minute.
Okay, okay, Councilwoman Snyder.
Okay, really quick on art. You had talked about the history of Milbury. You may not know that we used to have a stable. We had a stable until a few years ago, until SFPUC rebuilt their, top of their hill. And I have friends who had horses. I lived across the street. So I like the idea of the horse, just to throw that out there.
That's great.
And we used to be 16-mile house, so we were 16 miles from San Francisco. And when I was a kid growing up here, we lost the battle to save that. So anything in the mural art that has that reflection. I do like the fact that you were talking about art from scrap. Welcome, if you're not, I can connect you into the art from scrap world because we've done art exhibits in that area, so let's keep talking. And we also used to be a dairy. Our original purpose was, first of all, the summer home for one of the robber barons, but we had a dairy and we had chicken farms. So my dad remembers chicken farms here. So there's that agricultural aspect, not just transportation. So please, don't make us just transportation.
Yeah, I agree, and I have a very long list of things that I've come up with that I'd be happy to share with you.
And we have an amazing historical society. I'm sure they can give you some ideas.
Exactly. And I think that the artists would be really happy to talk to some residents as well as we move along and get some of that great local color that we don't know from not living here.
And just to throw an idea out at you, what I've noticed a lot of the public like is when they put in a bench and they put a sculpture on the bench, everybody loves to take a picture with that sculpture, whatever that sculpture might be, so.
I know. Did you see the little boy playing with the dog down here?
Oh, I might have missed that one.
There was a lot of interaction happening. It was great.
If you have the time, I'm sure the Culture Arts Advisory Committee would love to hear and see more of this. And they meet on the second Monday of the month, which means next Monday.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I think we have a lot more to discuss here. So if you want to get into art
Well, what's the pleasure to counsel, because we really need to address our other items. Why don't, it seems like it's just not, you know, it's almost nine o'clock, so I would say that we probably need to continue this discussion. What do you say? Well, I'm just saying, we have other items on our agenda.
I'm going to say here that, you know, this is something we're going to have to live with for decades here, and if we don't go through everything, it's going to be pretty tragic.
One of the problems
Wait, 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 listen.
Well, we've already started on art. Can we just finish art?
Yeah, we need to finish art.
No, no, my question is, it's not, it's not just that, but I'm just saying, overall, we've got a lot of items.
I agree. I'm ready to move on to other items on the agenda, but we've already opened the art.
Okay.
I'm only, the downside of Milbury is we don't have an ordinance that requires your art to come through the city. That's a good and a bad for you. We only hope that it's respectful, but we can't dictate art. I kind of wish we could, but we can't. We don't have the ordinance.
I believe we dictate it as far as this design goes, since it's a public
I don't think legally, and that's up to the city, that we can dictate specific art.
I believe it's a community benefit, and we get to comment on the benefit.
Oh, hang on, let's, I have two comments.
I mean, it's a speech issue as well as design, but no, we don't have a, you have the controls that are in the specific plan.
That's why the best I could say is, please come to Culture Arts and share.
We would love to.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Pappin?
Well, the chicken would have to look like the dog if you're going to do that. Seriously.
I think Ken actually has a chicken.
And do not follow the mural that's on the Safeway. It's a very racist mural that people insisted be maintained. We don't want to reflect that aspect of the community here. There was a lot presented in the original proposal for this project. You had a whole bunch of really dramatic art that was presented. It seems to have gotten a lot lesser so as we get closer here. This is the original gateway station. You don't have it here. This is, yeah. I would have liked to have seen a little more drama here. Some of the, your designers you're working with, great. And I see here your, the balls, if you want to call it.
Oh, yeah, the Linda Rainsford spheres.
So they would be hanging from different
They could be in two different areas. We like the idea that they're hanging from the overhead structures, which were consistent with the previous submittal. It's shown here. We just had a limited time for me to go over it. And I'd like to put a couple down at ground plan or on seat walls. I think it's a really cool art for people to see, touch, and feel. You all touched it, and you saw the little, the infant playing with it. It's fantastic. So I think it works in multiple locations. That's our plan.
I worry about it as people playing with it. Okay, that was one little kid.
They'll be a fixed. They won't be something that could roll or move.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, so no, they would all be very solidly fixed.
Durable it would be.
Exactly, and fit for public use.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, I'm concerned with that. I don't think, I would like to see it more dramatic in how it's presented there. The metal figures you showed us.
The dog? Yeah.
That's one.
Yep.
That was pretty cool. So you've got here, can you explain this? Is this just?
Yeah, there are two raised concrete pillars on either side of Garden Lane that flank the drive on the entry. And on either pillar will have a sculpture. And so these are the ideas that we came up with, working together as a team and with the artists, so.
Are you talking about the top image or the second one down?
Second one down.
Oh, the interactive pillars.
Interactive.
Interactive pillars. No, they've got, you saw the sort of the finish on it, and as people look at them, it's almost a distorted, so this is art, so I'm giving you my take on art, okay? So when I look at it, I see my face distorted. And I think that when you add in the reflection of yourself and the statement or poetry that we are putting on that, it's a moment to reflect and reflect on the greater, well, everyone gets the opportunity to reflect on it how they want. I think of the greater world that I live in and the places I've gone and the people that have meant a lot, the places that stick out to me, the art that I remember, the smells, that's what it means to me. Everyone's going to have a different view of what that is, and the fact that they can stand in front of it and have a moment like that for themselves, I think is the part of iconic design that's socially iconic. It's bringing this to the people, allowing them to feel something and to do something in these spaces. To me, it's not the piece of stone or the glass. It's the humans, their interaction and their memories, the interactions between each other. I think it's that place-making specialness that art and that specific piece has.
Well, we definitely want the interaction.
Can I just jump in? Can I say, is that like the millennial egg in Chicago?
Oh, yeah, that's great. I love that.
Having been there, I've spent so much time with the millennial egg because it reflects, you can play with it.
Yeah, and that is the idea, you can go under the egg and you can, and this is sort of the same with this, where it's meant to be something that you can weave in and out of. Kids will definitely love it for sure. And I can send you some images of the artist of more, of works that are a little more like this. This is just a computer-generated rendering of his idea. And it is something new that he came up with specifically for this project, so I can't bring one in that's exactly like that. But we'll be happy to give, you know, other images that'll give you an idea.
That'd be great. I mean, I like the idea of it. Again, this is the transportation center, so, and we don't necessarily need to go backwards to bicycles or whatever here. What I'm not, this vertical screen thing, though, is really not impressing me, and maybe it's just because it's a computer generation there, particularly when we had originally things like that were in the original proposal that we got. So we've kind of come down a whole bunch of levels. Again, maybe we should be, I mean, this was, the developer presented these kind of things to us. And I think your, the metal thing you've showed us here is along these lines, but this one vertical screen, it's, I would just expect a little more pop in it.
I think the artists will come up with some more detailed renderings of that, but we can't ask them to do too much work on this until it's approved, just because of their time. So, but I do think that this is, the artists will come in with their own flair and make sure that it's beautiful when it comes along. But I do think that the idea was the purpose that you'd be able to see through it, and it wouldn't be something that would create a barrier and people could be behind it. So there's a lot of sort of public ideas that have to go along with how something like that would function in the space, which you can probably speak to more than I can.
Yeah, you've got the, then the vertical mural that you've shown here is really, I don't, it's on the next page, excuse me. That wall transportation thing, I mean, that really is going backwards here. And this is, so is this what you intended here? The one with the choo-choo train and all of that stuff? I think what would be more apropos is something that, again, doesn't go back in time, but is more incorporating of the metal material you were using there, something a little more consistent there. You've got your other interactive wall piece here. I'm assuming it would be something very different than what's proposed there, but somehow interactive, right?
That's correct. These are sort of to show you the three styles, and then the artists themselves would create unique art in these locations.
Okay, sorry. You know, we, this is a study session. There's no decisions going to be made tonight. And plus, they have to come back with the redesigned monument.
Yeah, and I'm just, we have to
Let's start wrapping this up, because we have other agendas. We have a lot of other people here waiting for decisions. So, Councilwoman Aliva?
Make this quick. So with regards to other types of art, is there, like where the synthetic lawn is, is there, is there electricity for a microphone or speakers or if somebody wanted to have an outdoor concert of some sort or something like that?
Absolutely, as well as water bottle filling stations, you know, the outdoor outlets and everything needed for the multitude of civic events and bicycle stops. I'm a cyclist, so I certainly understand that one for a big group ride. Fill up those water bottles.
Councilman Holliver?
Okay, I agree with Councilmember Pappin's comments about the vertical art screen and median barrier. And maybe, again, maybe it's just because it's a small rendering and it's, but it's just a bit confusing to me and not particularly appealing. I think maybe if we could see more of like a blown-up rendering of what it would look like, that would, that would help. But the way I see it now is not particularly appealing. As was mentioned before, if you're looking for Milbury history and things like that, we do have a museum here, I'm sure. And we have some great volunteers at the Historical Society. I'm sure they would be willing to chat for hours with you about this and give you a lot of great ideas, tour you around the museum, if you have some, a little bit of time for that. And then this interactive wall piece, I like the idea of it. I don't think it's in the best location, though. I think it would be better utilized and better served being, you know, closer to the, closer either to the station entrance or to the Garden Lane, retail passeo. One of my apprehensions that I had in the previous things that we had been shown was this art walk here. And in my opinion, I don't think it's going to be a very well-utilized part of the overall development, just because it's out of the way. It's my understanding there aren't any direct entrances to the residential retail building from that side. So I think having, and that's not to say to ignore it, but I think to have some of the more, you know, iconic landmark type of art closer to the trains, to the actual station entrance or to the retail passeo and not in that location.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that area along the alley, along Milbury Avenue, it's, to me, it, I wouldn't walk down it, especially at night. It's too narrow. It's no, there's only two ways, one side out, one side in. It's not a very, it's not a very, you know, it's not a very appealing. I would just close it off and make it a community garden or something for the residents or
You can't close it off. It has to be a drive-through.
It's not a drive-through. You can't drive through it.
It has, city vehicles have to get through there.
No, no, but you can, you can close and open the gates, all right? But you just can't just close it off to the public, right?
May I answer that question? We thought the same thing, and we got that feedback from staff. So we do have it gated, so it's open during the day. It's closed off at night, only for the use of the residents at that point. Thank you.
Whoa, 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 only for use of the residents?
Yes, at night.
Oh, at night?
Correct.
So during the day, I mean, we've pictured, you've got some dogs up there. There was a discussion about making it somewhat of a dog park, which definitely the city could use. So there's a whole bunch of different ideas here as far as access and who's going to use that. So I don't know how that's going to come together here. But, Mr. Mayor, comments regarding, and as a mind, the finishing things here, the, I don't think you guys are on the finishing things, but the bike lockers, we're hoping that those will be something other than just blue boxes. They can be a little more creative in that realm. Is that you or someone else?
We have two different styles, one which is BART mandated at the BART Plaza per their locking requirements. We have to follow their standards. We're happy to do so. They look good. In the other areas, we have our own. We can choose a variety of colors for that if that's your direction.
Okay, thank you. I think we do have, seems like there's still a few other items that we need to discuss, and I think that we really need to move on to our agenda. Okay, let's take a five-minute break. I'm sorry. Thank you for coming, and I'm afraid you're going to have to come back again.
One quick comment for you. First of all, I want to thank you for all your great input and your call for civility. I appreciate that. We, just about everything that you've outlined, I think we can implement within the plan. I mean, we, we really can't change structural items at this point, but everything else is very positive, and I, and we'll go to work on that and look forward to working with you. So we really appreciate the comments and are excited about moving this project along. And again, thank you for almost all your comments.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I think we want to be clear here that we are not finished in
Right, there's still a study session.
The study session. So there will be further comments regarding design.
That's right. Okay, thanks.
We're going to adjourn the special meeting that we halted and reopened.
Okay, let's adjourn. I'm going to officially adjourn the special meeting and go back to our regular meeting, and we're going to take, after a five-minute break.
Keep that, were you?
No, no, it's all yours.
No, no, it's all yours.
No.[459.81]
These were very minor changes submitted by a council member. You'll see them in marked in red. The next item is a PowerPoint. This is for item number 10, the public hearing on the Chevron gas station. And the final item is a revised attachment for item number 12 on PG&E. And that is all the items in the purple folder.
Okay, thank you. I do have a questions, two questions. One, actually, comments. So the calendar of events, is there any way we can also include, allow the community to also add items that we can put on our calendar? Can staff look into that? So they can post, like, the Rotary Club or the Lions Club has an event, you know, or like our website, you know, so then the public can see all the events that are going on in Millbrae. You look into that?
Yes, we need to look into that, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
I think maybe if they, any request items to counter could go through staff instead of just having an open.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, they'll have to be vetted by staff, yeah. Okay, closed session, report a closed session or city attorney? Do we have a report from closed session?
I don't have a report, no. No report.
Okay. All right, so moving on to minutes, I understand we're removing December 11th, and there is a public comment. Is this public comment by Mr. Lopez? Did you want to comment on one of the remaining minutes?
No, it's a different general.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll bring you back to public comments, which is coming up pretty quickly. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve in minutes? I have a motion by Councilwoman Schneider.
That would be as amended as to the November 27th, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. Seconded by Councilman Hollibur. Come here, your votes, please. Okay, thank you very much. Can you?
The minutes from the November 27 meeting and the October 23 meeting with the revisions to the November 27 meeting passed unanimously.
Thank you. No oral reports from our city committees or commissions. I have two speakers. The first one is Mr. Lopez, Rafael Lopez. And sir, you have a three-minute, and it's the lights, if you're not familiar, there's the yellow light and red light.
Hi, I'm Rafael Lopez. These comments are probably for the staff. I'd like for public comments to be recorded by the synographer or court reporter. Do we have a synographer or a court reporter?
Uh, no, we don't.
Okay, something to think about. If we do get one, I'd like for the council to take these notes from the synographer or court reporter and make them action items with follow-up. I'd like information on how to get the citizens of Millbrae to vote for the next vice mayor and the next mayor. What forms do we have to fill out and to who do we have to deliver them to? $86,000 for carpet? Are we carpeting a stadium? Do we have at least three bids to carpet City Hall? Are these bids released to the public? I agree with Papin that the new BART building designs look too much like South City BART. I think that the BART building designers are angry that they have to spend more money to make alterations to their designs, but we are Millbrae and we need to be unique. And Councilwoman Papin, double-decker corporate buses are almost 15 feet tall, so that bridge will never work. Yeah, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And I have Mr. Ron Radul. I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. My name's Ron Raquel, and I want to address a problem that I'm sure you're well aware. There's only one turn lane going into BART, as you know, and the planners from the CIR Commission assured me at a meeting in October that there was going to be egress from east to west, but there is no egress from west to east. There is only one turn lane. We are going to have over 800 units, and I cannot believe no one has even addressed this. I don't know if any of you have sat at the stoplight at the 76 station. It is horrendous, and you're going to make, have additional traffic going in there. This is an 880 corridor in the making. It is unfathomable and unconscionable, and the developers are going to make their money and get away with this, and we are going to suffer greatly after this. You need to press them to make adjustments to the turn lane going into BART. One lane is unconscionable. Stevie Wonder could even see this. I cannot believe this. This is before your time where the planning commission did it, but it is unfathomable that you're not pressing them to make additional adjustments to the situation. We are going to be affected. There is only one artery going into there. I cannot believe it. I don't know if any of you have sat at that stoplight, and then there is a red light camera at Rollins Road. What's going on here? $86,000 for our carpet, and no one's pressing them for egress into BART, and we're losing all these parking spaces? You cannot even get, if you're stuck at Millbrae and Magnolia Avenue, the traffic light turns so fast, you're going to sit there for at least three minutes, and you're going to have an additional 800 units. Everyone says, oh, everyone's going to use BART, but the people that go from Millbrae Avenue down to 101 are not, are going to be impacted, they might as well not even go to work. There is only one major artery. What is going on here? You need to press them to make adjustments for us going from west to east, and I hope you press them. I even brought it up, oh, they said, oh, we're going to make adjustments, but there is no adjustments. One turn lane? This is just unfathomable. This was before your time, but you have the ability to make an adjustment and to make the quality of life in Millbrae much better. And I've emailed Ruben and maybe Ann Schneider about this, and it needs to be addressed. There's going to be total gridlock, even on El Camino, trying to go from east to west. I cannot even fathom the traffic once this project gets going.
Thank you. So maybe staff, you can help out in those questions. I think that traffic mitigation is being addressed. I'm not sure, the intersection is an F section, is rated A, A to F is F, so.
Is there a turn lane going in there?
Right, okay, yeah. Sorry, I know what I mean, starting the conversation. So going, moving on to the consent calendar. Do anybody else need to speak?
Pull item five.
Pull item five.
Nine.
Five and nine are off. Do I have a motion for six, seven, and eight? Clear the board, please.
Clear the board, please.
Oops.
Okay. Motion for Councilwoman Aliva, seconded by Councilwoman Schneider. Come here, your votes, please.
Items number six, seven, and eight on the consent calendar passed unanimously.
Councilwoman Papin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, item five. This is for replacing in City Hall, and just, I'm looking around here. The carpet looks kind of okay.
I'd like to address that, if I may.
Yeah.
So first off, the project has gone through a public bidding process, and on this first page of the staff report, the bids actually came in pretty wide ranges. It ranges from 86,800, which is a low bid, to a high bid of 168,800. And the reason why the price being expensive, because the, we have a lot of furnitures in City Hall, including the city council, and the work would have to be done during off-hours when we are not here working. So we are paying a premium pay, that's one. And second is the efforts and the energy needed to actually remove every single piece of furniture when we actually doing the replacement. So the carpet cost itself is about 33,000. The rest of that is the labor cost due to insulation and also the premium pay.
I think the reason, if I may, I think the question is, why are we doing this and what is the need? And my understanding is that the carpet buckles and there's tripping hazards, things throughout that happen every time they clean the carpet, and so it's somewhat of a risk mitigation project as well.
I'd like to comment that sometimes when you get buckles, you can just re-stretch the carpet you have.
Which we did. And the carpet has been about, about 20 years old, so it is about time, and there's quite a bit of wear and tear, especially in the City Hall lobby area by the findings and the building counter.
Councilwoman Schneider?
What's a square footage?
I was just asking the park superintendent, we think it's approximately about 18,000 square feet, thereabout, in the entire City Hall building.
Okay, so the last time I recarpeted my house at about 1,200 to 1,400 square feet, it was $7,000, just to give you a relative. Now, that was with a good carpet pad, and it was a good quality carpet. Are we paying anything else? Because now my understanding is instead of a full sheet of carpet, we're going to be square, so in the future, replacement will cost less because we'll simply pull up the damaged parts and replace with the carpet squares. I may not be using the right word.
Absolutely. The term that we use, carpet tile.
Tile, thank you.
So we only going to be replacing those damaged tile, we'll rip those out, and we are part of the contract, we are also purchasing some extra carpet tile so that we have them in stock. And keep in mind that these are industrial-rated type of carpet, and these are not the residential carpet, they are quite a bit more expensive.
And one of the good things about carpet tiles is it reduces the time you have to replace, it's actually recycling, it's actually a zero-waste or climate change activity because you are reducing the replacement time.
Correct, and this is very similar to what we have done at the Millbrae Police Bureau as well as the Chakuri Room, and that was maybe three years or so ago. If I remember correctly, the cost was about 100,000 back then. So it's not cheap to replace this carpet, that we don't do it quite often.
Does it count that podium you're at? Are we going to carpet that again?
We are actually going to remove that, remove all the chair in the chambers, and then put in the carpet tile, reinstall the chair. And there's also some discussion that we're going to have with the mayor, with Mayor Lee had mentioned some changes that he would like to see to the chambers, so we haven't quite get to that yet, but we'll have a discussion with the council.
Yeah, the discussion was, can I talk about it a little bit? So the discussion is that we lack space, meeting space, so it makes sense to try to maximize the space that we have and try to reconfigure our rooms to make it so we can use more, more space for our community. So this is one of the rooms that's very underutilized, yes. So, you know, we want to maximize our available space. Councilwoman Aliva, did you have a question or?
I just want to know if the carpet company's local.
I don't believe so. They are local in terms of in the Bay Area, but not local here in Sematell County.
And we, did we check out any of our local carpet business?
We, we published a notice of bids, we tried to do outreach, conduct, let a lot of the contractor know, but as a lot of us understand, we are in this crazy environment right now, it's hard to even get contracted. The bids on project, as you have seen in 2018, we had come back to you and recommend that we actually reject bids. Received a couple of projects, a slowly sealed project, we had rejected one bid, and it came in at about 40% higher than engine estimate. So in this environment, it's really hard to be picky.
When's the last time we replaced the carpet? Why are we insisting upon carpet in a public facility like this? Would another floor covering be more versatile and maybe less expensive, but at least we wouldn't have to keep doing this all the time?
We did look at a couple other features, for example, hardwood floor would be, I would think would be a lot easier to maintain, but there are the sound effect, the echoing effects in the chamber with the ceiling, the acoustic, same thing with the reason why we chose carpet at the Chakuri Room because of the echoing of sound, and we had experimented with the recycled cork type of flooring at the rec center prior to the disaster. So anyway, those are actually not quite working as well because of those shoes that women wear, those high heels and.
Oh, don't go blaming us for that.
I'm not blaming anyone, but those, based on our experience, it was difficult to maintain.
What's wrong with an echo? In case you didn't hear us the first time, it can repeat on and on. Okay, given the safety hazard that you are reporting exists, I will, hopefully you get something more durable.
We will, thank you. Somebody going to motion? Councilwoman Schneider, Councilman Hollibur, your votes, please. Thank you.
Item number five passed unanimously.
Okay, item nine.
Item nine has to do with basically paperwork we have to file so that we can then qualify for funding for homeless programs. The estimate, when I read through it, was an estimate of seven, and I'm not sure whatever formula the county might have used for that took into account that we are a terminal end of the BART station and what happens at the end of night, and the fact that we've had vacant properties around the BART station for quite some time, so we know we've got a homeless population in there. The only reason I'm bringing it up is based on that number seven is the amount of funds that we would be able to bring in, and I want to make sure that, I think maybe if staff is open, that they push back on that number and make sure that we're getting adequate funds to handle the unique, I sound like Ms. Papin now, the unique situation that the Millbrae BART station puts us in, which gives us more people getting off that train. And I was at the county Board of Supes this morning, and I did have some people come and talk to me about how we handle people with psychological problems, so I want to make sure we're getting enough resources in to handle that.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point. When I reviewed the census back, now going on two years ago, January of 2017, I also thought that the data for seven homeless in the city of Millbrae was low. What this resolution allows us to do is now get in the game, and so we can participate and be more active and obviously grant funding, but also be a player within the homeless issue and solutions within the county.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I, too, will question the number Ms. Schneider mentioned here. I do know our law enforcement is keeping track of the people being forced off of the BART trains during the evening, so I don't know how you qualify as homeless, but if you have no place to stay in one night, I think you qualify. You have to be like, you have to establish residency. I don't, I mean, this is why, I would suggest, the only reason I'm bringing this up is that our sheriff's department has numbers that would greatly increase the number you have in your resolution, and we need to be reflective in order to obtain funding here, so I'm hoping that somebody consulted the sheriff's department, and this number needs, we know for a fact the number should be bigger.
Councilman Hollibur?
So my understanding is that there's a biannual point-in-time count that is used, and it's a uniform methodology that's used in all different jurisdictions, so however they counted the seven homeless individuals in Millbrae, it was the same method they used in other locations. So it is a bit difficult if, you know, they didn't happen to be getting off at the Millbrae Station that night, they're maybe counted as being somewhere else or not, maybe not even counted at all. So while I understand that might not necessarily be an accurate number, I think it's the best that we have now, and in terms of being fair and being consistent with our neighboring jurisdictions, I don't see how we can, you know, challenge that number.
Thank you. Councilwoman Aliva?
I was, for clarification, this is to be eligible, this is not about a number, so to speak. It's just, we have homeless people, so if we are to pass this, it's allowing us to be eligible for this program, whether it's seven or 100. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
I'm sorry, point of clarification, if you read through the staff report, there are several tables that, based on the estimate that each city is given, is how much money is set aside as smaller cities, and then as well as the additional money set aside for big cities. So San Francisco gets a big chunk because obviously it has a large homeless population, but if a lot of their homeless people happen to be riding BART in the wintertime when it's cold and get off at Millbrae, we are handling the problem. So there is a dollar amount associated with seven, and I just want us to make sure that we are unique and that we are a terminal station, and that would be unique for any, possibly any station, but any terminal station.
Yeah, and I mean, from a staff point of view, we agree, and again, I think as Councilmember Hollibur mentioned, this gets us, you know, by adopting this resolution, it allows us to partner with, with Health and Human Services here at the county, as well as then we're eligible for statewide grant funding. I think that when the data changes, and it's up to us as we present or as we submit our grant applications to bring that data up to date, but working with our county partner, I think is key here and important, and I think that one point in time is the issue, because I think we all know that we have more than seven homeless people that come in and out of the city, and so maybe we, as our own municipality, work with the county and have our own census and update it over a period of time. You know, a week or two-week period of time, we have a count, and I think, you know, working with the sheriff's department, certainly that would be beneficial. So we, there's no reason why we can't conduct our own homeless count.
Councilwoman Aliva?
Could you find out what the definition is? It just seems kind of weird if you're homeless, where do you live?
Yeah.
So if you can find out how they're taking this census, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Do we have, do we want to pass this tonight? A motion?
Yes, we have, if I may, Mr. Mayor, we do have a deadline. We need to get this adopted by the 17th of this month.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Aliva, and then seconded by Councilwoman Schneider, your votes, please.
Item number nine passed unanimously.
And I would just say, you know, there's a lot more to come on this issue that we can start to really be integrated and look for solutions, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so item number 10 is the review of the planning commission decision approved the design conditional use permit to allow demolition and new construction of the service station, convenience store, reduced signage and property zone, zone transit-oriented development within the Millbrae specific plan at 220 East Millbrae Avenue. I understand that, my concern was, I brought this up, because my concern was that they weren't going to install the EVs, but they are going to install the EVs? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so under the condition, and under the specific plan, they were just required a hard wire, not actually installed, but put the infrastructure in for the EV charging stations. And then so based on, on the feedback that we've received and discussions with you, the planning department did approach the applicant, and the applicant has agreed to install two EV charging stations. So that's where we're at this evening. So the, if there's no need for a staff report, and it's a pleasure of the council, you're satisfied with two?
But we already put it on agenda, do we have to vote on it?
Yeah.
So we have to say no to the appeal, right?
Well, there's, there's no appeal. It's a, it's a review under our municipal code.
So we say we approve this project with the condition that they put in the EVs?
Correct, that's right.
Councilwoman.
Is that the only thing that we can talk about, is EVs, or there are other deficiencies in it?
If you want to talk about something else.
Okay, so first, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this up and for finding that. I have 11 items. I can go over them quickly. I don't get to see these very often, they usually get dealt with at the planning station, but, and we're in transition. Do we have the owners here? First of all, I think it's a great project, these are just minor little things, not to scare you. I appreciate the bioswales, love seeing that we're putting in green infrastructure even before we have our plan, but I was curious about why we're keeping that, why you're keeping that one section of oleanders, which means we'll have one section without a bioswale. So one issue, if you're going to redo the landscaping, wouldn't you redo all the landscaping? The second is, I know you are an oil, a gasoline company, but someday we're going to have hydrogen fueling stations, and is there flexibility in your design to add hydrogen should Chevron go in that direction? The third question is, you're putting in EV charging stations, are you putting solar on? And this is more of a question to staff, where are our ordinances that would require projects of all kind to have to put in solar? So it doesn't, it doesn't come to us to debate whether or not we have solar. The fourth, if you were here earlier, I work in the solid waste field, there's a law called space allocation. I looked at your 17-by-10-foot garbage enclosure, and if you had both a three-yard bin for garbage and/or cordboard, most likely for corrugated boxes, and compost, which you should have because you're souving food, and can and bottle recycling, I don't think your enclosure is large enough. And the space allocation law, which was put into place around 1992, was to dictate that enclosures always have adequate space for wherever the solid waste or zero-waste field is at that time, and I think that it's inadequate. I could be wrong, and I'd be happy to be proven wrong. Also, my pet peeve in gas stations all over the country is we have mandated commercial recycling, but if you get out and fill up your tank, there is no place to put an aluminum can, most gas stations, maybe yours is unique, but, and has it, but there's no place to put cans and bottles or any other recyclable. And every time I wash my windows, I take the paper towels back home so that I can put them in my own green waste bin. So if we're trying to become a greener entity, I'd like to see that the containers by the pumps are adequate for what the law requires, and California law requires that certain materials must be recyclable at commercial operations. So that should be something that planning should be catching at any of these plans. The other exciting thing, which I think is going to bring business to your station, is we are on the Bay Trail, and with the Bay Bicycle Trail coming in, hopefully you're going to be getting more customers, but as a former cyclist, sometimes finding a better source of air can be really tricky. You've all got your own pumps, but sometimes they break or sometimes you lose them, so hopefully you've got an air pump clearly marked for the cyclists that hopefully we're bringing to town, because I think that that's one of the few tourism pluses we've got.
I'd like to note that my father passed legislation, all gas stations are required to have air and water available.
But for bicycles, too. Just to make it clear, I will tell you, I've gone to many gas stations, and they go, no, you're not buying gas, you can't get air. So, you know, if we're going to be on the bicycle trail, it would be nice that we are bicycle-friendly. I'm trying to go quickly. I think, I think, on a water fountain, I know you're trying to sell water, but if you don't have a water fountain, they're going to use your bathrooms, so just be aware of that. And, oh, on the right side elevation, it's a blank wall. I noticed that planning asked you to put lattice work on your other walls to add some vegetation, so it's not just a wall, but they didn't put it on every side, so I would just encourage you to put lattice and plants on the right side elevation. And I'm done.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hollibur? I mean, sorry.
Want my name tag?
Sorry.
Yeah. I'll make it easy for you. So they're putting in the EV infrastructure? Is that correct?
Originally, that's what they were doing, but.
But, um, what's a but?
No, now they're, they're actually installing two EV charging stations.
Okay, I'd like to suggest, as, make it easier for the transition here, our friends from Tesla are right down the block. I know the city has approached them about a supercharging station. Your location would be great, and hopefully they would pay for it, for you. So if the city could assist the property owners in making that connection, oh, yeah, so, at least one.
Maybe Safeway will pay for it.
Well, see, this is why I'm bringing it up at this point in time, because Safeway has negotiated with somebody else. And given the fact that there seem to be several Tesla owners, and I will reveal that I'm one of the smaller ones, it would be really great if they would, if the city could assist this property owner in contacting them and hopefully making that happen there.
We'd be happy to work with them and reach out to Tesla.
Through the chair? Go ahead, by Smith.
My understanding is that the Tesla charging stations are exclusive to Tesla vehicles and not to other types of EVs.
That's why I'm saying just one.
For those members of the public who are not Tesla owners, I believe it would be more equitable to not have that as a requirement of the plan, and, or even a suggestion of the, of the council to go in that direction, but just to require that there be EV charging stations, preferably EV charging stations that are available to any type of EV owner and not just Teslas.
Not to jump into this debate, but what I heard is that there's two.
With respect.
Two charging stations, and then add an additional Tesla charging station. If Tesla was to fund it and work with the gas station owner-
Well, that would be great, and I would just like to say, if it's quote-unquote "a supercharging station," not that I, any of us in Millbrae would need that, because we can do that at home, but it does bring in travelers and revenue to the business. Right now, the only supercharging station is at Saramonti, the mall area. So in order to bring more consumers into Millbrae, beneficial to the property owner here who's going to have their, you know, grab a bite and whatever, if that's at all possible, and the property owner is interested, I'm not requiring it by any means. I understand what my colleague, Mr. Holliver, is saying. But it is a really great benefit to Millbrae as to bringing people into the city.
Okay, any other discussion? Have a motion, have a motion? Somebody want to motion approval with the EVs?
So can the items that I asked for, because they are based on existing law, except for mandatory solar panels, can we see that that happens? And the other things, I think the city has to do its own work and start requiring new projects to put on solar. So I can't hold you accountable for that. I'm not expecting that, but I'd love to see it. I think it's a great way to help us with our climate action plan when we get one. But in terms of at least the solid waste actions and the bicycle friendliness, again, I think it's good customer service, and you'll bring in, you'll get your return on that.
Hi, Sergio Linares with CBRE, representing Chevron Development Manager for Chevron's operations here. First, I'd like to apologize. I guess I didn't come prepared fully, because we thought this was just going to be regarding the EV stations. At the last meeting, we did have more representatives with us, and we had some, a little bit of time to do some homework to answer all of your questions. So as far as being able to make all of these changes, we'll definitely look into everything that has been suggested. You know, I just jot it down real quickly here as you, throughout the comments. Landscape, actually, I just met the developers for the previous project, so I did, we did exchange contact information, information, so we can try and work on the landscape, so it's a little bit more cohesive there, as far as where-
You're doing bioswales, though, so you're ahead of them.
Yeah.
Doing much better.
Doing bioswales.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, as far as where the oleanders are, you know, again, I didn't have really a chance to look at exactly where those existing ones are, so we'll take a look at that, and, you know, make the appropriate changes for that. Hydrogen, that's kind of a new animal. I know it's, there's been some little talk about that within Chevron. I really don't have information on that at this point. I do know that all the projects that I'm working on, which is all of California, we're not doing any hydrogen, but I don't know where we are with that. I know that they're talking about it, but that's probably in the future somewhere.
And that's why I mentioned, if there's flexibility-
Oh.
That's why I mentioned, if there's flexibility, or just keep it in mind, because it seems like each month, they're pushing those hydrogen stations. Now, they originally designed them to be standalones, but Millbrae's small, we may not be able to have two different stations. But we'd love to keep customers coming to you.
But just for clarifications, you asked if you can make everything that you mentioned part of the deal. So if you're saying now that, just, you know, take your advice and take it from here, what are we voting on?
Well, he's still going over what he-
I know, but we can't-
Please let him finish, and then I'll know.
Yeah, I mean, as far as hydrogen, I, we can't make that a part of this project, but I don't know where Chevron's going to go in the future with that. Most likely, you know, whatever the market demands, I guess, is what's going to happen eventually. But for now, you know, we can't make that part of this project. As far as the EV, or excuse me, the adding solar to, to the project, that's something new that we started to look at. There is kind of a pilot site, let's call it, right next to Chevron's corporate offices in San Ramon. Yeah, there's a Chevron station there that they're going to be piloting a couple items there. But it's, from my own understanding of solar, I don't think we have the footprint to really have a functional solar system on that, on any of our gas stations, really. That's why they're piloting it right now. You know, you've got mechanical units on the roof, you know, you need room for those, you need, you need to be able to maneuver and, and maintain those units, or you need space to walk around. So that's something that, you know, again, I don't think we can look at right now, but once that, we get more information from that pilot program that we have in San Ramon, I'm not saying it's not going to happen in the future, but, you know, we can see where that goes. The space allocation trash enclosure, I don't have any information on that right now. Craig, I don't know if you've got info on that.
Size per requirements?
Yeah, so I mean, we'll work with staff to make sure that whatever is required, that we satisfy those requirements when we go through, get our permits. The recycling at the trash dispensers, that's actually a very good comment. That's something that I will take back to the Chevron team and make that recommendation. And the way, the way it works, I mean, without boring you with all the really, really boring details, it's all corporate standard, right? So we have the same trash enclosures, the same canopy columns, you know, everything's the same. This is a corporate-owned location. It's not a retailer, it's not, you know, some mom and pop that is operating this gas station, it's corporate-owned, so it's all corporate branding. So that would be a change that would have to come, but I think that's a great suggestion.
The laws you should look at, and I've got to make sure it was Chesbrough 344, Chesbrough's been out of office a couple of years, but it's mandatory commercial recycling that went into effect in 2012. And then the recycling materials and levels increased a couple of years ago. So really, all corporations who are designing this, and all cities, should have it in our specs. It should, it should have become law, it should have been standard practice in 2012.
Right. Again, I didn't bring this, the district manager that has more information as far as all of the elements that they include inside of the store, that might be included within the store somewhere, but I really don't have that firsthand knowledge myself. The person was here at the last meeting, but that didn't come up. But I do think that's, that is a great idea, because I'm big on recycling myself, I yell at my wife about that. Air and water, yes, we do have the air and water at the site. It's, I think we're just kind of figuring out exactly where it goes, because we had it where the EV chargers are now shown, so we're just moving that around. I'm a cyclist myself, so, you know, I keep my little CO2 cartridge in behind my seat for that, for those emergencies. What else? The lattice on the walls, yeah, I mean, there was actually one wall, I don't know if that's the same one that you're talking about. We have the, the roof ladder on that side, and there's also, I think, the emergency egress, so I think that's why we couldn't show it right there.
Page A10.0, and it's the second drawing.
I don't have-
Other than that, I love the colors and everything else. I heard you had a color discussion at planning, but-
Yeah.
Yeah, it's that wall right there.
The right side?
Oh, yeah, that faces the trash enclosure. So I think the trash enclosure is going to screen that in whatever landscape we have around the trash enclosure.
It looked like you had separation in there. Just, any plant material is absorbing carbon right now, and you're at 10 feet above sea level, at current sea level.
Well, I mean, we could talk with our landscape architect to see if that's something that we could include there.
Sure.
I think that was it.
Okay. Is that it? Okay, so the motion, so the motion is to, let me clarify the motion. The motion is to approve with the EV stations. Okay, is that right? Okay, so can I have your votes, please?
On the public hearing item, it is approved with a motion to approve the EV station, and it passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. On no existing business, so moving on to new business. Item 11, I have not, I'm not completed my analysis yet, so I've asked, the only thing I could say is that Councilwoman Aliva has, has agreed to, to switch with Councilwoman Schneider on the airport noise roundtable, so thank you very much for both of you.
Is there subcommittees, or?
Yeah, this is subcommittees.
Just one clarification here. You did not open or close the public hearing.
Oh, good point. Oh, we can do it now. How about? Okay, I'm going to open public hearing. Does anybody have a comment? Okay, crickets. All right, so I have a, can I have a motion to close? Can you clear the board?
Sorry.
No, no, good, thank you. I'm a little rusty. Can I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion, and-
Open or close?
No, this is the close. So can I have your votes, please, to close public hearing? Yes. All right. I'm sorry.
You haven't voted yet.
Oh, thanks. You guys are too fast. Can I have the announcement?
Oh. The motion to close the public hearing passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. All right, so, yeah, it's about the subcommittees. So I haven't completed my analysis. The only other thing I was going to say is that I'm adding, I'd like to add two other subcommittees. One, the school district's asked to do a joint International Day celebration that they usually do, so I asked Councilwoman Schneider to be on that committee with me. And also, Councilwoman Schneider and myself have been working on having a garden, community garden built in Millbrae, so we're also working on that project. Okay, so, yes, ma'am?
I am seeking the position of the MTC seat, which will be coming up at this Council of Cities meeting, so-
Ah, yes, so, do we have, I don't think we need to take a vote, but we need to just take consensus. Do we have, do we have consensus to support Councilwoman Pappin for the MTC seat?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
I thank you for your support.
Also, let me make sure we get a proxy for Councilwoman Pappin.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
So the proxy's just on record, then? So if the mayor's not there, we have the proxy established, please.
All right, so moving on to the informational report on Richmond medium replanting by PG&E.
So, one second, when will we get our subcommittee?
I'll try to get it out tomorrow, so, and then we'll have staff publish it as well. Yes, ma'am?
Tomorrow is a postponed and changed date for community enhancement. Do we just keep our current assignments?
Yes, keep your current assignments. I think, I don't, I didn't make many changes, just a few. Okay.
If I may, Mayor? Good evening, Mayor Weissman and member of the City Council. In the interest of time, I will make this very quick. First off, I'd like to introduce Ken Cosetti, Public Works Park Superintendent. And also, we have a couple, several representative from PG&E audience that will address any question that may arise from council comments. And to begin, I just want to start by saying that back in June, around June of 2017, about 19 months ago, PG&E removed four mature California pepe trees along the median, center medians on Richmond Drive between Poplar and Palm.
Can we be clear for the record? They removed them without authorization permit and everything else.
Correct. So the slide I have in front of you right now, the picture to the left show the existing condition prior to PG&E removing the four California pepe trees underneath the main, that transmission line. And the picture to the right is a bare median with the stump remain in the center median after PG&E removed the four trees. So this is just some pictures that we found on Google Earth. The existing pictures is actually, that was the last picture from Google Earth that showed the four trees, and they were taken in 2016, sometime in 2016. As you could see, the transmission lines were way up there. And these are the estimation that we came up. We thought the trees were about 20 feet, so the distance between the top of the tree to the bottom of the transmission means about double the space, so we estimate that to be 40 feet, or maybe less, maybe more. So after 19 months of working with PG&E, we came up with some sort of a conceptual landscape plan that we'd like to bring to your attention and have your comments on it. So that, from discussion with PG&E, we understand that some of those big trees cannot be replanted underneath the transmission main because of some easement restriction that I was advised of. So we came up this plan about redoing the center median for the three blocks from, from Poplar Avenue to Lincoln Circle. So the basic concept, I'm just going to talk really quickly on the first block between Poplar and Palm Avenue, where those four trees were removed. There were four trump, stumps, I'm sorry, and PG&E, PG&E agreed to grind the stumps and take out the concrete island. And we also agreed to not putting a certain part of the island back. So we'll create a little planning detail there, as you could see to the right of the slide. So there'll be some depression, a couple inches of depression below the asphalt surface, and then there'll be redwood headers around the planning area. And this is where we are proposing to replant eight-foot-tall dwarf crepe myrtle, which I don't know what kind of trees they are, but I'll go to the next slide, so you could see the picture. I want to admit that I am not a tree guy, so I don't know much about trees. I, although I love pipelines and hydraulic modeling and stuff like that. So these are the crepe myrtles to the right, and they look really, really nice, I think. And there's the little picture to the left of it that looks like a little green bush, and those are going to be ground covers that we are proposing to install along the center median for those three blocks. And that would be sort of the central theme of the planning scheme. And this again, show you the, more detail on that, which you have in your purple folder. Please disregard the three plan sheets that we attached as part of the agenda report, and we are replacing that with a revised landscape plan that Kent and Andrew Yang prepare. So with that, I'll have Ken talk about a little bit of the planting species, since I'm not able to tell you more about that.
Here we go. Thank you. You want to go forward? Good evening, councilmembers. This is pretty much the scheme that we have picked for Richmond Drive, was to kind of go with what we have out here in our water-wise garden. So some of these plants are, well, all of those right there are natives, and we plan on incorporate these plants. So basically, what we're going to do is, the circles there, they're basically going to be the same thing. The circles there, basically, we're going to have the same plantings throughout, up to Lincoln Circle. And-
Can you talk about this crepe myrtle?
That's the first slide.
That one?
No, go ahead. Crepe myrtle. So we plan on putting the crepe myrtles where the trees have been removed, and our recommendation was to continue that all the way up to Lincoln Circle. The idea of the crepe myrtles, we're, we're trying to get something close to, you know, getting into our, what we wanted and what PG&E agreed with. And so I went with the crepe myrtles for the color in the summer, and then in the fall, you got the orange and the reds and such. The festuccas basically are going to be around the crepe myrtles, and- The festuccas basically are going to be around the crepe myrtles, and so it'll kind of carry that through, through the winter months. So, that's about it. If you have any questions?
Actually, I do have some additional comments I'd like to make. We have proposed that 20 dwarf crepe myrtle will be planted along the center median and 32 of the festucca, festucca be planted along the center, same location. However, PG&E has disagreed to the extent of that, therefore, we are going to be having some discussion tonight about that.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Me? Who?
You.
Gina, do you want to go?
Please. We support you in pursuing the number of plants there. It's been over a year here, they've been going back and forth, denying liability and fighting us tooth and nail, so the public has been without anything for long enough that we, I believe, council consensus here, is that we will support you in seeking the number of plants and trees that you're going for there. I would be curious as to the ground cover besides the plants there. Maintaining the dirt and everything is important these days because you've got the water droughts and then flooding and all of that, and we're not, they're lucky we're not asking for a biosphere here, so I don't know why we're not. If you have some idea whether it's rocks or something, because in order to maintain the quality of the landscaping and the dirt, it's important you also include some sort of covering, and I don't, you guys are the experts on that, but please include that as well, because you have to maintain your quality of dirt.
Now, keep in mind, too, that over time, the plants that we... We have picked will fill in, so, you know, over time, you're not going to see the bare dirt out there.
So, Deputy Director, Deputy City Manager Lim, you said we had asked for 20 trees?
We have asked for 20.
Two zero. Okay, so four trees were cut down?
Four mature trees. They were about 20 feet tall.
Okay. As Councilwoman Pappin said, I support you completely in trying to get as many trees. Part of the problem we have is we do not have the tree ordinances in place that require people who've removed trees legally or illegally to do a certain replacement. We really need to bump that up on there. Now, I was at a breakfast in Silicon Valley a couple of months ago, and I spoke with PG&E, and I thought at the time that they told me they were willing to do a one-to-four or one-to-five tree replacement, but I bet at that time they didn't want any trees at all, and that that was one of the trade-offs. So I had at least one PG&E representative tell me they were willing to do a one-to-four, one-to-five, which would be your 20 trees. So I would say go forth. I should have asked, first of all, I live a block and a half away from there, it's more than 500 feet, I should be perfectly okay, I don't see any financial value. All right, I have been attending the city's new bike pedestrian committee and have been working at the county level on safe routes to streets. I just want everybody to know that the bike people in Milbrae have been looking at the location of Taylor and the location of Green Hill School, as well as Lincoln Circle and the rec center, that one of the ways to make a safer bike route is to change how Richmond Drive is structured. So when I looked at your plans, it looks like we can do what you're suggesting and still come back and change basically that wasted space underneath the power lines if we do some kind of change. What one of the bike pedestrian, well, Dr. Del Negro has suggested, one way to get a separated bike lane is to change those little bump outs up and down Richmond Drive on the corners, and you could run a straight, separated bike lane there and could be part of our safe routes to school. But because we don't have those bike plans to us yet, we're in transition for that. So it looks to me like what you've done is flexible enough that we can still go on and make those improvements without having to re-dig a plant or anything like that. Are we in the same place, then?
That is correct, and I'm glad that you actually brought that up, because Richmond Drive is one of the safe route to school project that we are working on, and if you recall, we received a grant from San Mateo County Transportation Authority for the project back in 2017, and we are in final design stage, and the project should go out to construction towards the end of this year.
So are you planning on planting now in the wintertime where they can get established or waiting until next fall for root establishment?
Well, some of the material's not, you know, it's a dead winter, so my suggestion is probably springtime.
Okay. It's just a question of trying to get all the pieces to work where we are only doing the work, we're only digging once, if you want to use that terminology.
Wait, planting them, us or them?
PG&E will be hiring a contractor while doing it themselves, so I don't know at this point.
And are you thinking that the mulch would be decomposed granite, so it's blending with what we've got at City Hall, given that Richmond's only a block away?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it gives a little similarity in there, and I will tell you, I ran the plant list past the people that care about plants on community enhancement, and they said, "Okay." So, good.
All right.
So, fully in support of get as many trees as you can.
Was there a reason why they cut them down?
There were many reasons. I don't know where to begin. There was some background information I have here that Ken was notified by some PG&E consultant back in May, April of 2017, and there was some miscommunication, I believe they were going to remove some vegetation west of the Milbrae School District Office going up to Kennedy Place. But for whatever reason, we showed up to work one day, and those four trees were missing on Richmond Drive, so we had been working with PG&E, like I say, for the last 19 months to come up with this conceptual planning, and we do have PG&E representative here, and I'm sure that they would like to comment on that, too.
So basically, GPS went wrong or something like that?
That I do not know, and there's a lot of back and forth, like former Mayor Pappin had mentioned. There was some communication that gone between the city attorneys and their attorney. We recently received a reply from their attorney back in December, the end of December.
So I would be in favor of the full amount of trees that's owed to us, and I would like our, I would like to be the one, our city to be reimbursed for putting them back, because...
That's, that's a whole, they're going to, they're going to do it.
If we were doing it.
Our city to put them back, so we know that they're put in correctly and the way we want them put in. I mean, PG&E are not, they're not Public Works.
Well, as far as I know, so it was an independent contractor that took them out by, without approval, license, or anything like that. Case law is in our favor, that when PG&E does this sort of thing, we need to be made whole. I do believe that our staff, I think an assurance from our staff that they will oversee what's happening here. How will the irrigation work as well?
You want to take that?
You changed my subject. I know I did, darn it. Ms. Leva is still talking.
I think that we have the staff and we have the expertise to put them in correctly, and somehow, if we want additional materials, we can ask for additional materials and trade for our expertise standing right there.
There are actually a couple of comments I'd like to make. First, the irrigation is going to be hand-watering. Unfortunately, we're going to be doing that with our water trucks. There is no irrigation system in the median currently. And second, we, as part of the replanting project by PG&E contract, that we asked for a 90-day plant establishment period to make sure those plants are living and not dying, and after that, we have a one-year warranty period. So we have a pretty good assurance to make sure that these planting materials will thrive in the center median.
But who's going to plant them?
We would like to have PG&E contractor do that, the landscaping contractor. They are not PG&E employee, they are contractor of PG&E, and they will be a state licensed landscape contractor.
Landscape professionals.
I would be not for that idea. I would...
Not it?
Vice Mayor Holber?
I don't mind using PG&E's contractor to plant the trees, because that would be a significant amount of staff time, I would imagine, for our staff to plant this many trees. I would suggest perhaps, maybe we could have the staff, you know, review the qualifications of the contractor, or, you know, at least be involved in the selection process with the contractors that... I don't really have much doubt that it would be a qualified contractor that would do a good job on this, but I don't think it necessarily has to be our staff members going out there and, you know, spending their time planting these trees. I would concur with my colleagues here that I would support the staff's recommendation of the 32 trees, as well as the, oh, sorry, the 20 dwarf crepe myrtles and the 32 festucca rubres. You know, I think that would make this a very vibrant street, and this has been a process that has gone on, I think, far too long, and I understand there's been a miscommunication back and forth between both, both sides, but I think we just need to get this done and move on. There was another comment I thought that I had, but, oh, one other comment. This did come up at the last Parks and Rec Commission meeting a couple of months ago, and they are meeting again next week. I'm sure they would be very happy to give their input, you know, in terms of what they would like to see in, in that space. I know this isn't informational item tonight, so we're not taking any formal action, but just a suggestion. Thank you.
Years ago, I recall when we planted trees, we planted usually, I think it was a four-inch PVC pipe, at least three to four feet down, and the trees that they cut were well-established, they could survive any drought. These are new, new ones, so they're going to need that. Are we going to make sure that we have that so that you can pump the water down the tube? How do we do that? Because when you look at our street trees throughout town, we don't have that.
Well, actually, we have.
Well, we don't have them in my neighborhood, but those trees were planted in the 30s, so...
You need to use the mic, Ken, please.
Everything we plant now, we do the water wells and...
That's what they're called, water wells?
Well, the watering tubes and the irrigation and such, so unfortunately, out there, like he said, there's never been irrigation out there, and there's nowhere to hook it up.
Okay.
So, we could make that recommendation, sure.
Okay, regardless of whether we do it or PG&E subcontractor does it, then we should have that. And if we don't have that in an ordinance now for any trees that are being replaced, we should get that in that tree ordinance.
Councilmember Schneider, this is actually part of our standard detail for irrigation and planting.
Okay.
So it is part of our standard specification.
Very good.
Councilwoman Pappin?
Is there a way to formalize this? PG&E is going through maybe some transition. We are hoping they stay healthy in one way or another, but formalize this in writing so we don't have to go back and forth again in the future, because that has been exceptionally frustrating.
Can we have PG&E, oh...
I, excuse me, Mayor, I will ask PG&E representative if he'd like to comment on that.
Mr. Chang, nice to see you.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, for the record, I'm Bill Chang, your PG&E rep. I apologize, can you repeat the question or the...
As far as our discussion goes tonight and proceeding as quickly as possible on remedying the issue, we're wondering if we can formalize this in writing so that there's no miscommunication in the future.
Absolutely. The PG&E crew, excuse me, the PG&E team is continuing to work in with your city staff to iron out the final details.
And I apologize, the PG&E staff has kind of transitioned, they've been part of the problem, Mr. Chang, in that, you know, they misunderstand what we're asking for, so that's kind of why we're trying to formalize this, so there's no further miscommunication.
Absolutely, so...
Thank you.
As we continue talking with city staff and finalizing the agreements on the landscaping plan and who pays for what and who does what, of course, everything will be put in writing. I want to introduce some...
What PG&E pays for?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think the question would be, do you agree with this plan this evening to move forward? I think that's the question, I think that's where we need to get to.
Then I need to, I need to bring up my senior manager, Frank Salguero, who's the senior manager for Peninsula Division, who led the conversation with the city on the details of the plan. Also with me is Kevin Boudreau, Bouteau, I'm sorry, Kevin Bouteau, who is superintendent of our, oh, excuse me, supervisor of our transmission, electric transmission line vegetation management for the southern area of PG&E.
Welcome, gentlemen. Would you like to join us at the podium? It's a party.
So I think Frank has, has some of the details that, that he discussed with city staff, including your city manager, regarding some of the details of the landscaping plan.
Good evening. We've been working with, with staff with making the repairs or replacements of the trees, and we did offer up the idea of the city actually planting, and we would pay for the actual plants going forward. We've identified three medians out there, actually, one median where the four pepper trees we removed, we will take responsibility and replace those vegetation there. We've also looked at what our costs are for the other medians. Given all the work we have there, we could go with repairs through two medians, the first two blocks, not going all the way up to the third. Okay, and that's been communicated to staff and said, "We're ready to go with that," should this, should the city agree with us to go in that direction.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, well, I was going to say, it's been communicated to us, but we haven't accepted it. We want this plan from PG&E, and we don't think anything less is going to be acceptable, and so we just think that PG&E, for example, I don't know where you are, and this is off topic, you had that emergency repair, and there's this asphalt on our decorative crosswalk and paving, you promised that that would be done, that yet has to be done. So I think that we really need to discuss, you know, again, without a permit, you saw the height of those trees, I think everybody kind of knows.
Let's take that offline, you guys.
Well, I'm just trying to say that you state what you state, and we'll state what we'll state, and that's, I just, I don't want to mislead the council or our public that we agreed to anything, so I just want to put that out there.
Not fair enough.
I want to speak up because...
Sorry, can you speak in the microphone, please? Thank you.
I want to speak up about that, because what I just heard from the city was not what I was informed that was agreed upon, and since I'm the person that's paying for it out of my budget, I have a real difference of opinion of what you agreed to, what we agreed to. So we need to talk about it and work together, because we are a part of the community, but we also have our own rights and our own diligence to maintain our facilities.
We've had, we've had four meetings with PG&E specifically on this, and this is the first time you and I have ever met, so we're ready to go.
Okay, great, so...
Clarification, though, we've been going back and forth for over a year now, you know, we are not going to accept stumps being left in median here, so the, one of the biggest costs is to grind down those stumps and make the median whole, kind of thing, so, you know, the discussion about all this going back and forth with your representatives, it's just not acceptable to say, you know, "Hey, yeah, we took them down and like, we'll replace trees." You can't do that without removing the stumps and reworking the median. So I understand you have a budget, but there was no permit and there was nothing to remove those trees.
It is my suggestion that you review, you talk to your city attorney and review the letter that was sent from our lawyer.
I did.
Yours.
I did, and we disagreed, and we responded to your letter, so...
Okay, well...
Oh, you just got one. My apologies, sir, didn't see that one.
Yeah, you read the seven-page letter?
Did not, I've just been informed, did not.
Okay.
I'm, I'm willing to work with the community, but I'm not willing to be made out to be the bad guy, because I'm not. Okay.
Okay, fair enough, so, but we do want some reassurance, I think, Councilwoman Pappin is looking for some reassurance of something in written form that obligates or some sort of agreement from PG&E. Can you do that? Once you guys reach the agreement with the city?
Once we reach the agreement, I'm more than happy to put it in writing. That I have no issue with, but what I have issue with is being told that we're being illegal and not following the rules when it's not true.
Would legal counsel speak up here? Because we've been informed early on that there was nothing, so... So, go ahead.
Chevron disagrees with-
Not Chevron, PG&E.
Sorry, PG&E. PG&E disagrees with the city's position in terms of their requirement to get a permit and their, the particular trees and what their, what their threat was to the power line. So, we did receive, I had forwarded it, I'm not sure you got it. We did receive a letter that took great exception to our July 3rd letter. We received it on, I think, Christmas Eve.
Merry Christmas.
But, so, I think there's a disagreement. I think the pathway here is for the two, for the city and for PG&E to work together and come to an agreement in terms of exactly what's going to be done and we'll put that in writing. And I'm not sure it's worth getting into the minutia of the legal. I mean, I think at this point, we just need to work a deal and get what's acceptable to the city and get that in writing and get the work done.
Okay. And what I think this council is looking for is some sort of a deadline here because it has been dragging on for a period of time. So, if legal counsel can work with the PG&E people and there can be some sort of agreement in the next, you know, 60 days or something, I don't know if that's possible, but hopefully that would work out.
Sounds like a reasonable timeline.
Do you have a quick question?
A quick comment. I just want to make it perfectly clear that I'm not trying to make you out to be the bad guy. I'm trying to give you an opportunity to be the good guy for the community. So.
Councilwoman Snyder.
I'm curious. We have high-power lines all over Millbrae and many other communities have high-power lines. Are we consistent with those other cities? If you would look into that while you're doing whatever negotiations with them. I seem to recall that Merlingame kicked up their heels and they got high-power lines undergrounded, whereas Millbrae did not kick up our heels and we are left with high-power lines. These are the ones running along 280. And given the changes that are probably going to be happening with high-power lines, Richmond Drive's about as concrety as you can possibly get in terms of sparks causing fires, but we're already being a good player in that. And I don't want to make you into an enemy. At the same time, we've lost two years of carbon absorption by those trees in the two years of waiting with this. Trees are a major component of climate change and we all need to be cognizant of that. They're not just trees. As well as that, they also slow down traffic on a street that drives very, very fast. So, there have been things, not just the loss of trees, there have been faster cars, more risks of people getting hurt as well as the loss of carbon absorption. And that's something we all have to be taking seriously.
I can't disagree with the carbon absorption, so let me just add that as part of whatever agreement we eventually work out with city staff, what has never changed was PG&E's offer of, what is it, 25, 25 additional trees for the city. We would basically create an account for the city at a, at a tree farm and the city can go get those 25 trees at the city's leisure and place them wherever the city wishes. So, that's, works out to a net of 21 trees for the city to use, you know, at, wherever the city wishes to place, as long as they're not in interference with utility facilities. So, that, we hope that helps. That, that aspect of the offer has never changed. That was what we talked about at that breakfast.
Okay. Thank you. This is informational item, so thanks for coming up. Do you have something else to add?
I was just going to say, as long as we're here and it's been two years and there's been no progress, I mean, it's fine to get up and say, we're, you know, we're going to work with the city staff and we're going to, and you're not the bad guys, but what we want is, is to get our fair share within this community. And we're going to start demanding a little bit more as we had mentioned. And so, I don't want to go away, you know, kind of with this, with this thought that, you know, we're going to have this plan when I don't think that that's the case, you know, with PG&E. It sounds like you said two medians is what you will agree to.
That's what I was told, yes.
So, I mean, unless there's something that they say that, yes, we'll work with you and we'll be the good guys and we'll, we'll add that additional median strip to help us out. And then that's where we get the four-to-one replacement of the trees. I just don't want to, I just don't want to lead with any false expectations of what is actually going to happen unless, unless tonight, you're willing to work with us a little bit more.
Seeing as how, it's almost 11 and I will not be home until tomorrow at this point, I can take some time and talk to you about it, but I would like to comment that I really do lean towards Councilwoman Aliva's plan of the city planting the trees. You can plant them wherever you want, as long as they're not going to interfere with my line and they're compatible with that line.
And we get our stumps removed. I mean, this, this is, this issue's gone back-
The city, the city can also do that as well. And I'll pay for it.
So, you'll reimburse us if we do it for, for this plan?
Correct.
For the, for the full plan?
No. No.
That's what-
I would do like two medians.
I do like to comment on that. I did have a conversation with Frank and Frank ran down the numbers with me about replanting, stump grinding, concrete removal. So, he had offered to reimburse the city up to $30,000 to do the work. No, we cannot accept a $30,000 reimbursement because for us to do the project, we had to bid it out as a public works project. We had to come up with a plant specification and go through a bidding process. So, the cost would be quite a bit higher than that. So, therefore, we are pretty adamant about wanting PG&E to replant a tree back into the median.
I know it's late and we, we really do want to work together. So, we can, we can bring it back.
Can you guys work this offline so we can continue? We have other things that we need to discuss, so thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. So, on to public, I mean, council comments. Yeah, so I'm going to start with Vice Mayor Holber.
I suggest we forego council comments because we still have a closed session.
I'm good with that. Anybody else? It's okay?
I'm good with that.
I have a comment that has to be read before we close.
Okay. Would you like to make a quick comment then?
Yeah.
Mic, please.
Okay. To the city council, I would like to go on the record that I will, I am electing, let me start over. I would like to record for the record that I am declining to attend tonight's closed session as I am concerned about the proprietary of procedures being followed and I do not wish to have my presence bar me from formally communicating with the appropriate authorities. And this has to do with Better Millbrae.
Okay.
And I, I'll give you the, my attorney actually wrote it out for me, so.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Nothing else? All right. Thank you.[1651.62]